Welcome everyone to the Lower Mcfield Township Board of Supervisors meeting. We are interviewing Christian Schwartz, who has asked to become a member of the zoning hearing board as an alternate member. Welcome, Christian. Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So briefly, in 2014, I did interview in front of the Board of Supervisors at the time. There was a lot of vacancies. I was asked to apply an interview for HARB, which wasn't really in my wheelhouse, but they were in danger of shutting down. They didn't have enough people for a quorum. After the interview, I was told, it was suggested to me that zoning hearing board or planning commission were better suited for my background. And if I was willing to wait a little bit, they expected some openings. Unfortunately, I then ran for school board and that was taken off the table. So I've been off the school board for a few years. Recently retired, I have some spare time and I'd like to get back into community involvement.
We appreciate that. And the liaison, the supervisor liaison is James McCartney. So we'll open up the questioning with James.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Christian, for applying. I see you have a ton of experience, obviously, in the electrical world. Do you have any experience in zoning and property and real estate?
So I do not have experience in that. Where my background in the electrical industry, I think, is relevant is that we have a code of standards we have to follow. Our code is updated every three years, whereas zoning kind of sits other than the variances that happen. We do have exceptions in our code and we sometimes have to apply those exceptions. We sometimes have to meet with the authority having jurisdiction or the inspectors and work it out. You know, they will sometimes have other ideas based on their knowledge, deeper knowledge of the code. I did take and pass the exam for electrical inspectors at one time myself. So I'm very aware with applying codes and sticking to standards. I also understand there's a lot of things that come before the zoning board that are routine, that happen frequently, such as encroachment on a property line or going over impervious service calculations. And those most obviously have precedences that have gone on for years and we would, I would certainly learn from those, stick with those. It's the rare occasions where big things come up. I was very interested 10 years ago in a case involving a potential horse hospital at Patterson Farm. You probably all remember that. And I was glad it didn't go through. I just felt it was too much crammed into a small space, way too much. You know, now the big thing is, as you can hear in the hallway, I guess, the cell tower. I can't comment on that because I live in that neighborhood. I'm jacent to it. So. But I have an open mind. I'd like to hear all the evidence of things and learn as I go.
Okay.
Question, I know that you have a solicitor for the zoning hearing board, so I would constantly be leaning on them for guidance and information as well as the other board members.
Okay. Interestingly enough, I think two of the sitting, well, I think one of the sitting members of the zoning here board would have to recuse herself during the cell tower, correct?
As did the attorney.
As the attorney. So as a sub, I don't think that he, I think that he would have to recuse himself as well, right? So you obviously.
I wouldn't be able to be involved.
Yeah, involved in it because you've already, you've already been your party status.
Yes, I'm fully aware of all that.
Just for clarification, that's fine.
Listen, I have had a business for 15 years in this township.
Sure.
And there's an occasion where you might get some former customers of mine who come, and I would have to weigh out how much of a customer were they? Did they become a friend? And I would have to recuse myself if it was someone that I became friends with.
Okay.
You know?
And you're comfortable doing so.
Very comfortable with that.
That's it. That's all I had.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll be super quick, Christian. So first, I hope you're doing well.
I am.
Okay, excellent. I almost would have, all these years I had never needed electrical work until recently. So you would have been my first call. He retired too quickly on me.
I closed at the end of 2022.
So I have no problem with your service. I welcome it. I know that you comfortable disagreeing with me and being independent, which is part of what the zoning hearing board should be, because you've disagreed before and stuff. We've worked together on school board stuff. So I got, I have no, I would have no problems with you at all whatsoever.
Supervisor Bundy?
I have nothing to ask. Thank you, Christian.
Supervisor Griner?
I'll just ask, sorry Fred, I'll just, with your experience on the school board, another, another board, how do you think your experience on the school board would inform your, your time on the zoning hearing board?
Uh, just taking the time to hear all information. Really, that's critical. You can't go into any decision-making process with your mind already made up. If you do, you're gonna, you're gonna create a lot of animosity between you and the other board members, you know?
I thank you. I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Fred?
Christian, I've known you for at least seven years and maybe more. I'm fine. We'll deliberate. You will hear probably by the end of tonight or tomorrow, if you watch or stay around.
Okay. You'll probably be in bed before.
I, I'm way behind on my beauty sleep, as you could see.
You'll hear from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Is there a way to increase Ed's fault, especially with this meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Welcome everyone to the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors Business Meeting for July 19. I will call the meeting to order and please join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll. Supervisor Bundy?
Here.
Supervisor Granger?
Here.
Supervisor Lewis?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney?
Present.
I am here. We have a quorum. And we will, um, we will do announcements. Then we will, um, go right to public comment and discuss the events of last week. So, um, is any member of the community online or in the audience who'd like to give an announcement? For the township?
We'll save that for a public comment. Yeah, it's just announcements.
Well, we'll, we'll be opening public comment up so the people from Maple Vale and other people affected by the flooding can speak, but this is more about like, sorry to say this flippily, we're having a fundraiser or those kind of community announcements. Yep. Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's all right. Thank you, Supervisor Bundy. Well, are we what I have? A member of Lower Makefield Township Park and Rec Board is hosting a free shredding event at the Township Building, 1100 Edgewood Road, Yardley, PA, on Saturday, July 24th, from 9 to 12. That's in the morning. Lower Makefield Township will be hosting a blood drive for the Red Cross on Friday, August 18th, 2023, from 1 to 6 p.m. in the meeting room at the Township Building. To sign up or get more information, log into redcrossblood.org and enter sponsor code LOWERMAKESFIELD. Community Day will be held on August 26, 2023, at 1050 Edgewood Road. Join us for food, fun, rides, and more. For more informed, for more, for more information, visit lmt.org/specialevents. The Ad-Hoc Property Committee is creating a long-term master plan for Patterson Farm and asks for community involvement. This township-owned property is that across roads with historic buildings requiring expensive repairs or they may be lost. Potentially millions of dollars could be needed. But such expenditures cannot be made only to have buildings saved and sit idle. The committee is working with a team of architects, engineers, and economists to determine best and compatible uses for the buildings that could benefit to our community and thus support maintenance for future generations. The public is asked to become engaged, A, by attending public Zoom meetings held the second Thursday of each month, B, learning more at lmt.org backslash community backslash Patterson Farm, and C, attending future public forums. And but that's all I have. Is there a member of the board who has further announcements?
Yes, Fred. Um, we've been notified that on Sunday night, the 23rd, um, all community residents are invited to join together at our Garden of Reflection, the Memorial Garden. It's a night, um, we often meet there at times of sadness and healing, and so the community is invited to join Sunday night, the 23rd at 7, um, to be together in solidarity for everybody impacted by the flooding.
Thank you, Ms. Bundy. Any other members of the board have any announcements? With that, I will open the meeting to public comment.
Uh, Chairman Weiss, can we also just take a moment, uh, for a moment of silence in honor of those who lost their lives?
Of course. Let's take a moment of silence for those that have lost their family members, loved men, loved ones, and of course, property damage and everything else. Okay. With that, I will now open the floor to public comment.
So the one at a time, if you could come up to the mic, state your full name and whether you're a resident of Lower Makefield?
My name is Greg Lusecki. I live in 18 Mapleville Drive, Yardley, PA. I am a resident. We were supposed to be on vacation this week and next week. After two years. Time to go, have fun. We get there, we go to Maine, we're there for two hours. And we start getting frantic phone calls from people after paying for $450 for groceries for the week. Frantic people were underwater. Okay, great. What do we do? So we know we have to come back. You can't drive that long, that late through night. Truckers don't even do that. So we also found out that power was intentionally cut and gas to our house and neighbors to each side. The Gambles and April here. So haven't, haven't given that information. Okay, we didn't rush home on Saturday. We waited, slept none, got in the car at 4 a.m. and then came home. Came home to find out that my backyard was completely missing. My shed, everything in it. I have a list of items if you want them. My first intermediate question is I'd like to hear your plan for how you're going to fix and fill the space hole in within the location where my, where my yard was. I'd like to hear that plan. And I'd like to hear when you're going to institute that plan and complete it. And I'd also like to hear how you're going to brace whatever you do to correct the problem. Throwing in dirt into a hole, even if you steamroll it, is not a correct answer. You're going to need to seawall it, somehow brace it. I want to hear what you're going to do. I want to hear it today. And I want to see how fast you implement it. If it's not going to be today, when is it? What is the plan? I'd also like to know what your plan is for fixing the water channelization issue that we have been complaining about for a long time. People get on TV very heroically. This is a 100-year event. A thousand-year event. Okay? I've been here for 30 years, 32 exact, if you want to know. I've been flooded four times. This is by far the worst. Anybody who says it's a 100-year event or a thousand-year event is just showing how unqualified they are speaking to a public audience. So what is the plan for getting water away from us? This township seems to be very good at passing approvals for continued building in areas that used to be farmland and forests. Some of the reasons why we all moved here. But we keep building. I have seen nothing done in our immediate area to improve the expected increase in water uh, movement. Outside of it's just going to be okay and it's going to head in our area. So what's the plan to fix that? I'd like to know. And when are you going to implement that? So after you fix the hole in my backyard, because I'm not paying for it, I'd like to know your plan for reimbursement of the vegetation that I lost, work hard to plant, maintain, grow, and manicure. I'd like to know the plan for reimbursement for that. I'd like to know the plan from the township for reimbursement for my shed because I don't have flood insurance. We don't live in a flood zone, but guess what? This township managed to manufacture one and now a really big one. If you want to see it, go look at the crater in the back of my yard. Okay? I want to know the plan. What is the plan? Okay, I don't want to come out of this meeting with a minutes report that says we're gonna, we're gonna follow up. You won't be forgotten. We have heard that. I've been here 30 years. I've heard it four times, well, three times now. Nobody said it yet this time, okay? But we have been forgotten and you knew you weren't done after the last flood we had two years ago. You knew. You knew. There's no way, I'm not going to call anybody a liar, but you knew. Then come to find out, after we washed away our yard, the storm drain that's in there, the corrective action that I saw for us was you take a single great drain, put two there. Sounds good. Same pipe, not any bigger, and it's installed backwards. You're supposed to have certified professional engineers on this township board that know what they're doing. If that's the case, why is that guy getting paid with my tax dollars? Why is he living someplace probably bigger and better than my house? Safe, and he's not even here. He can't even be to this meeting. He's on a TV screen. That tells me something too. So I'd like to know the plan for some of these questions. How I'm going to get reimbursed because my insurance company isn't going to cover it. I already paid for it. I paid for it. I owned it. I took care of it. Now it's gone. And from my perspective, what I've seen, it's a result of negligence and incompetence on the township's part. You have budgets for things like trees, a half a million dollars, I'm told. Okay, what are you planting trees for? You're just going to end up in my driveway. Yours is keep building buildings. Take that money and fix our block and fix the water problem. That's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
I'm supposed to follow that? But, um, we're going to try. My name is April Bullwage Clover. April like the month, Bullwage be like boy, O-L-L-W-A-G-E hyphen Clover, C-L-O-E-R. I live at 20 Maplevale Drive. My husband is Brad Clover. Our seven-year-old son, Jackson Clover, who has still not been home yet. Um, our property sits on the left side of their property with the collapse. I'm sitting that on top of your collapsed drainpipe. Thank God we weren't home because Jackson and I would have been trapped in our house watching our yard collapse with water at the front door when we couldn't have left. And my husband, their kids, I don't know where Glenn is, and our neighbors would have been in those drainpipes and that water again like they always have been. They've been trying to clear the drains and we would have lost them like the poor families in Upper Makefield Township, our hearts are breaking for. I know this will not be the last time you're going to see me, so I'm going to keep this very pointed and very brief. I would like to thank our family and friends and our neighbors, even the strangers who continue to come by our house and check on us. We're especially grateful to Carrie and Jackson Dalton for opening their home to us and treating us like their own. We'd like to thank the members of this board who have come out to visit our homes personally. Dan and John, thank you. For those of you who have not done so, I'm sure you have your reasons. Uh, perhaps there are other families in LMT who had their yards collapse. Perhaps there are other people who had flooding two years prior and you were going to visit them. I didn't see any of them on the news, so I'm not really sure what that's all about. Before I get off track, I would especially like to thank Mike Kirk, Fire Marshal Chamberlain, Police Chief Kalusi, and anyone else that worked to get our power restored after the lines were cut in fear that their house would collapse. We'd also like to thank Representative and Mrs. Warren, Senator and Mrs. Santa Sierra, who have been helping escalate matters that our previous pleas have resulted in even worse flooding and the added bonus of a ravine. And I would love to say that we didn't see it coming, but we did and we told you. My neighbors called you. I stood here where I'm standing today and I went on record. And I said that we were worried after the last flood that that pipe was exposed and that we were concerned and we were worried of what we had already lost. I told you, my husband and I were worried about letting our son play too close to, close to the canal. And you know how hard it is to keep a seven-year-old boy away from that canal? At this point, his playhouse, his outdoor toys, they're somewhere between our home and the lock on Abston. We have had strangers picking through them, going through with fishing nets after we asked the canal to be shut down. We've had some kind people reach out to me who don't even know me on Facebook, sending me pictures of toys, asking if they belong to Jackson. We can talk about plans and drains. We know that takes time. We all know that there's a nice new bike path and tennis courts. They get money. There's $9 million in surplus in the state, but what we need to know exactly is what the township is going to do to repair our homes to repair what we've lost now. I want to know when someone is going to come and tell me that the new crack in my patio does not go under my home. I want someone to tell me that it's okay for me to be on my second floor in the hallway and for it to look like this. And for my son's room to be leaning toward the other side of my home. I want someone to certify that our land is stable now. I cannot bring my son home. Who's coming to our neighborhood to help us tomorrow? Who is coming next week? Who's coming the week after that? Because this is not going away quickly and neither are any of us. A lot of us work remotely. I can work from your lobby. I can work from my car. We can be very accessible. I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to ask you to answer those questions, please. We also have links to all the photos we've been collecting from the Yardley, I'm sorry, from the Maplevale Meadow and Taylorsville Road families. We've set up a similar Google photo drive for those in the Hillwood Terrace community. And we have bitly codes, we have QR codes. I will leave it to you before we leave, but I really want to know who's coming out tomorrow, who's helping with our homes because we can't afford to do this again. We came out of pocket during COVID and you know what things cost to get done during COVID. I was, I have, I have sinkhole policy coverage, but it came, but, but since my house didn't fall in, I get nothing and it's still going to cover the flood damage. We can't afford to keep doing this. My son is traumatized. Whenever a flood alert goes out, we can be anywhere and he sees it. Mama, is that going to be the house? I need my boy to be able to come home and be safe and I need answers to who's coming out to our homes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, yes.
Hello, my name is Barton Cartwright and I, um, I've lived here since 1960. This is, this is the worst flood I've ever seen. And I think I'm just going to give you a little bit of, uh, uh, a suggestion about these, uh, these, uh, tributaries to the, to the canal, the, the little, you know, the creeks and, you know, and tributaries to, you know what I'm talking about when I say intributary, right? Uh, if you have a uh, a monitoring, you got to monitor the, the creeks for the debris and the, the, the trees that fall, you know, I'm sure there's trees that fall down that go into the creek. I mean, that's part of the, what, why this is all happening. If it was a free-flowing all the way to the canal, I don't think it was, we would be here having an issue about having a flood, even with this large amount of water that has had came, come down. If we had that creek free-flowing, I'm sure, I'm sure there wasn't, wouldn't be any problem. So I'm just putting a suggestion out there to having at least one person come out like once a month to monitor the, the creeks, all the creeks. to having at least one person come out like once a month to monitor the, the creeks, all the creeks around in our township. I know it's a lot, but it's saving a lot. I'm telling you, it saves a lot. If you had just monitored the, the creeks. I'm, yeah, I'm really serious about it. You know, I'm sure these guys are serious too. You know, uh, and also I would like to know when the, the timeline of finishing the paving of Maple Vale. I mean, it's been, we were told what June 21st was the timeline? 15 months. Now, she's, I don't know. We all pay taxes here. I don't know why it doesn't, hasn't been done. You know, I wish, I just hope, uh, you take my suggestion serious. Thank you.
Harry Gamble, uh, 16 Maple Vale Drive. Uh, I've lived here about 49 years plus. And probably the oldest resident, this is about the third flood, major flood that we had. Even there were others, but this is the major. Uh, we, we lost the heating system. We lost the washing, a dryer. Uh, we lost the boiler for hot water. My car. Uh plywood, uh, not plywood, but the paddling on the one wall. Uh, a lot, lot, lot of labor intensive cleanup, intent, very intensive. But I can't see a reason for it with this, we, we thought this problem was corrected with the roadwork and the putt, the piping that was put in that directed the water into the woods. It was, it, it was nothing that helped us with that construction. And I want, wanted a, a personal note, my wife's sister, uh, came to visit with us. Uh, lives close, uh, not too far away and uh, heard, uh, one, another relative came from, uh, Pittsburgh and the relatives got together at my house, saw the flood. We lost uh, eight cars were involved and six cars were totaled. And it, and it works some somewhat expensive cars. One was $70,000 car. So there must be something that can be done. We enjoy the neighborhood. We enjoy the neighbors. They have been very helpful. And we thank all the, the political, the, the people that came. We thank you very much for looking at, now I hope that something is done with, with, with what they saw. Thank you very much.
Tim Daly. Uh, so I came tonight because one of my daughter's best friends actually lives down in that community and thankfully lucked out that they were on the higher plane. And I took a drive down there and to see the damage and it, it was just devastating to see it. So, you know, I listened to these first two commenters and to, to hear their pain about that they brought this forward to you guys and you didn't do anything. So the first question I want to pose is so that these people understand why nothing was done. Dan, Mr. Grenier, will you offer an answer up to the community of where you were on Sunday around 4:30 in the afternoon?
Absolutely. I live about 200 feet from this neighborhood. Every, most people in this
I said 4:30 PM in the afternoon, sir. Please tell
Don't cut me off.
I can, I can cut you off. It's my time, not yours.
You asked me a question?
I'm giving you a question. I'm asking you, don't give up pontification, simple question. 4:30 PM, where were you? Because I have witnesses that know where you were and I want you to communicate to these people where you were.
So after leaving this neighborhood, I went up to Upper Mayfield Township to meet, to, for the, um, to meet with the governor who is giving a presentation up there as well as State Senator Santa Sierra, Representative Perry Warren and others and Senator Fetterman to ask for assistance.
Thank you for your honesty. That's all I needed here. So for the people here, you all got to see those photo ops where the politicians all came in. That's where Dan was. He wanted to be with pictures for photo ops. And if you guys didn't know what was happening afterwards, there was a scheduled campaign fundraising event, which is the reason why all those politicals were here, $25 a head. So if you want to understand why it didn't get done is because your five board members are not here about governance and doing their jobs. They're here to be politicians and become popular in your community. So over these past couple of years, so you guys understand why things weren't getting done because we got guys like Dan who think we need traffic circles and we wasted money on those kinds of things and their little pet projects. We also had the road that they wanted to build for a bike path near people's houses that sit on this board, which has increased the value of their homes. So, but some of you might know me as the guy that Pens, that Pensbury threw off and told me I couldn't speak. And I sued them and went first amendment case and I won and I did it through our, their RTKs. And I want to encourage all of you here to start submitting in RTKs because that's how you're going to find the answers. So for you guys to know, I've been submitting RTKs over the last six months. And I started learning about what's going on in this community. Thanks to a whistleblower person in the government here who has opened up a whistleblower investigation with the Attorney General's Office in Harrisburg to investigate all the things that are being done here, very especially in the office of Mr. Kalusi. So for you guys to understand things that I've learned and under, and uncovered and the reason why they're not focused on your issue is because they're on these other issues. So there was a female police officer who was egregiously harassed. And she was wrongfully terminated and our township had to pay $305,000 out of your taxpayer dollars because of what occurred. We had a hack, we had a ransomware attack. That was the result of them not doing their job and doing a patch that had been out there. The cost to the taxpayers for that, you guys to understand, was $520,000 that you guys paid because they didn't put in a simple patch. And 170,000 of that went to, I believe, somebody in Russia who stole everything. So other things that we uncovered is that we have a no show police officer. Uh, no, we, we have a no show police officer that they have been paying $700,000 over the last three years. And now they're all scrambling to figure out what are we going to do about it because Tim Daly found out about it. But the worst thing of all was they uncovered that Dan Grenier and Chief Kalusi initiated against me and my family an illegal surveillance at the request of someone that they don't want to share. And 12 days later, gunshots rang outside of my house and Chief Kalusi and his department falsified the address as to where the shooting occurred because my wife was outside and is the only witness. And she has not been interviewed. And I've learned from the whistleblower that the interview between me and Detective Lang, Mr. Kalusi, doesn't exist in the file, which is against the law, sir. And despite all of these things, and I brought it up two months ago, nothing's been done, just like nothing's been done for you guys. Because they are not interested. They are not interested. They're not interested in doing it. So again, I encourage all of you guys, do RTKs. Do RTKs, submit the RTKs and I am happy to help all of you. If you want to learn how to do it, get the information so that you could take the proper legal action against this township for the things they did. It's important that
Mr. Chairman, his three minutes are up. I ask that he yield his time. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McCartney. Um, I'm going to stop public comment for a second.
We have a woman who's approaching Fred.
Okay, I, I just, there's, there's a couple of issues um, that were addressed in the first few um, comments. So I'm just going to stop it just for a little bit. I'm going to let our township manager chime in and try to, um, answer some of the questions that have been posed because I think it's important. So Mr. Kratzer, could you, um, chime in and give a, a, a a, a kind of synopsis on what's been done, what will be done, uh, to help the, the residents of Maple Vale?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. And Derek, Derek, would you mind coming up as well? And perhaps, um, is Jim in the audience? So Derek, I, I don't know if you can just speak to, um, the first gentleman's, um, question in terms of, of, um, repair, obviously of the, um, uh, of the backyard and, um, uh, stormwater infrastructure that, that, uh, that was within the easement in the backyard.
Yes, so ob- obviously our, our, our first goal and, and, and the main goal is to repair these backyards to the existing conditions before the flood event. Um, so we have a geotechnical engineer, which is the first step that we need to take to determine the proper materials to get back in there and to make sure they're placed properly. So, you know, we do not, it is not the township's intent just to throw the dirt back in the hole. So we, we want to make sure it's done right and properly. So a geotechnical engineer, it will be on site. He will ensure that the materials, whether if the material that was there is not compliant or, or not proper, he'll tell us what materials need to go in there and we'll execute that. We already have three contractors, um, in the sidelines waiting to, to, once we have that material selected, whether it's import or reuse or modify. Uh, we'll get the material placed, get the storm drying back online. There's also a possibility that while we're there, add an additional drain to do a double barrel to again, it's not going to solve everything, but add additional capacity to the system that's already there, the existing system. And to restore those backyards and armor the slope, uh, working with DCNR and get the, uh, gravel bar that's in the canal out of the canal. So all those things are in the process. Um, we're just waiting for the selection of the proper material or verification of the material that needs to go into that yard. Um, everything else, as, as soon as that determination is done, uh, well, DCNR is on board. Um, we have the DEPs on board with issuing necessary emergency permits. We have everyone in the sidelines waiting to go. Uh, we just need to, we, we're just waiting on one simple thing, just to make sure the material is selected, that we're doing it the right way. Uh, to ensure this never happens again for these residents.
Sounds good. Jim, do you, do you have anything to add, uh, beyond that in terms of the, the, I guess, the, the initial question that was posed?
I, I think Derek pretty well covered it.
Okay, all right. And then so beyond that, um, you know, obviously we continue to work with our, with our legislative delegation, uh, again, as was noted in, uh, by, by, um, the second speaker. Um, both Representative Warren's, uh, office and the Senator's office has been very helpful. Um, we continue to interact with them on a daily basis. Again, um, some of this is going to require, um, uh, you know, permitting, as was mentioned, and, and sort of coordination with, with state agencies. Uh, and both have committed to us that they will, uh, work diligently, um, to try to expedite the process, uh, and, and make sure that the, the agencies are mindful of, um, you know, the extent of damage and, and, and also the importance of, of, of restoring. Um, you know, the property that was damaged as a result of, uh, as a result of the storm event. Um, so beyond that, we've also, um, started to interact with PennDOT, um, related to drainage, uh, along Taylorsville Road. Um, which again, uh, there, um, is probably some opportunity for some improvement in certain, in terms of additional drainage facilities adjacent to that state highway. Um, and then, um, we're also, uh, working, uh, with that legislative delegation, uh, to try to identify funding opportunities. Not only to address things in the short term, but, but come up with more comprehensive solutions, um, beyond what, what currently is, is, is planned. Um, there is a second phase to what was entitled the Maple Vale Project, um, which is, uh, looking at, um, sort of conditions in that stream channel, uh, on the, uh, west side of, uh, Taylorsville Road. Uh, again, making sure that any obstruction is removed, making sure that the efficiency of that stream channel is operating, uh, at, uh, a proper level. Um, and then looking at, uh, the installation of some additional inlets on Highland Drive, uh, to capture water, uh, and again, um, prevent that water from, from discharging at that, at that low point. So, um, we are committed to, to looking at, uh, comprehensive solution. Um, uh, we, we recognize the importance of moving fast and appropriately as it, as it, as it, as it relates to uh, restoring the condition, uh, in, in, in the yard. Um, but beyond that, uh, I know, I know the board is, is committed to looking at, um, you know, perhaps more global or comprehensive, uh, solutions to, uh, these, these drainage issues within that drainage basin as well. Uh, Isaac, I, I don't know if you have anything to add, uh, as a representative from the consulting engineer's office, um, so with that, anything you could add would be helpful.
No, thanks Dave. Uh, and for those that don't know me, I'm Isaac Kessler. I'm with Remington and Vernick Engineers, uh, our Bucks County office. Um, here in Lower Makefield. And, uh, for the gentleman that pointed out Andy's on screen, uh, recovering from a recent surgery, uh, he wasn't able to be here tonight. Uh, obviously it's, it's a priority for us as a township engineer to be on, onsite, address what's happened, uh, look to basically do three immediate steps. Uh, the first one obviously is securing the site. Uh, we're working with the departments here at the township to do that, as they mentioned. Uh, the next one really is fixing what's happened. Right? Um, and the manager mentioned some of the projects in the area to speak to some of the comments that have been, uh, mentioned already. The storm drain at the, uh, corner of, uh, of, uh, Maple Vale there, uh, the inlets that go to the open space. Even the ones that are slated to improve the drainage on the nearby roadways, a storm like we had this past weekend overwhelms our storms and inlets, right? So as much as it, it sounds fantastic that we're addressing issues for our, our most regular storms. For events like this, it's little comfort, and we understand that. Uh, I'll, I'll make a few notes and obviously, uh, you know, the public comment I'm sure will open up again, but I, I just want to point out a couple of things. Um, the, the projects obviously are looking to improve the stormwater, uh, management in the neighborhood in that area. Uh, it's a, a, a multi-front look at how to improve it beyond that. So what, what are the things that can be done if the storm drains, if the pipes are full during these big storms? And that's something that we look at with the staff, with, with the supervisors, identify what projects can get funded as quick as possible, can be, can be implemented. The immediate things, we mentioned the, the geotech engineer, that's first step to get that identified. So we have that whole repaired effectively. Uh, the armoring of the, where the outfalls are, not only the one where it washed out, but the one, uh, just the property, uh, I believe your property, uh, one up there. Uh, that also had damage at the outfall. That'll be part of what's looked at to be repaired and, and armored in a way where it'll be more robust. Uh, the the area, the focus of, of the MS4 that we look, look at as, as a township wide, um, you know, program every year. Uh, the way that flooding is, is really, uh, kind of more global look as, as the supervisors mentioned. Uh, is, is taken very seriously by us, not only to identify what we can do in this township, but in the watershed as a whole. Uh, so I, we understand it's, it's little comfort, obviously for what's currently out there at the moment. Um, but it is a priority of ours, uh, to identify how to secure it, fix it, and also, you know, do what we can to improve uh, the situation for, for storms that, as we know, are, are more common than they used to be. The intensity is what folks, like you, you, you obviously see that when those systems get overwhelmed, it's that intense, short burst storm. The, the drains fill up, they're at their capacity. And so the water has to find another way through the, through the same neighborhood. So the projects that are done, we take a fresh look, see if there's ways to direct water that's on the surface to try to make sure it's not going towards properties and things of that nature. Uh, and we continue to look at ways that each project that's put together to consider what the real world conditions are with these more intense storms. And not just the chart with the numbers to say, well, you know, it's a, it's a, like you were saying, the 10 year or 20 year or whatever. It's how, how to effectively manage the water in the neighborhood for what is being experienced on a monthly, annual basis and so forth. Uh, so all I can do for the folks tonight at least is commit that we're working closely with all the staff, with the manager. Um, the one gentleman mentioned who's, who's on site, uh, that's us as professional, uh, engineers, as consultants. Uh, you know, we saw other, uh, professionals on site, supervisors. So that's, that's our role is to assess and give our professional expertise. So the supervisors can take that information, speak with who they need to speak to and have the action start to take place as well. Uh, so we're, we're committed to addressing what's out there to So we're committed to addressing what's out there, to getting not only a fix, but also to improve the situation and also receive the feedback that you have living there on a day, daily basis for ways that when it is improved, how to, you know, identify those spots that need the most attention. So I hope that's helpful. Obviously, we're here to answer any questions tonight. But moving forward, we look forward to working with the folks to get it repaired effectively.
And with that, we'll reopen public comment.
Could you?
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Yeah. I appreciate what you said, sir. You said it very eloquently, and I do understand what you're saying. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. From my perspective, okay? Do you know why flash flooding really occurs, honestly? It's because the infrastructure that is in place is insufficient to handle water that could come into that area. Okay, I'm going to go back to, we have been very good in this township to allow development to continue out of control, really. I don't know who's getting that money or who's paying what to who. But development continues, and I have seen nothing in improving what you have been talking about in the years that I've been here. It's only gotten progressively worse. All I'm saying is, and I know what you're saying, I do understand it, flash flooding occurs because that infrastructure isn't there. It doesn't have to be that way. This is not a poor community. Everybody here is a professional, and I know you guys are not stupid, okay? What I'm saying is, I do my job. I take care of my property. I pay for it. I respect my neighbors. I look out for them. I take care of my kids. I look out for everybody else's kid and pets. I do my job. I pay my taxes. That stuff goes in part to pay for you to do your job. I'm just asking you at this point, do your job. Do your job, get it right already. I don't have another yard I can give you. Please do your job. Fix it now. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Greedall. I live at 233 Meadow Drive. And I just hope you're getting that this is a community of old-fashioned, caring neighbors who care about each other, who do block parties. When you're coming up with these solutions, and you're probably all smarter than I am, please remember one thing. These, it's more than just property. It is families being traumatized. I can't even imagine. It is a life we're trying to build, part of your community. We are an asset. I want to ask you, when you're making plans and final decisions, if it was your family, if it was your property, would you be satisfied? And if the answer is no, go back and rethink it. Thank you.
I'm Stubbins, resident. My mother-in-law has lived at 233 Taylorsville Road, excuse me, for probably 60 years. The bridge in her driveway has been there since the day she bought it. Good or bad, it's always been something people usually recommend and like. I want to thank Derek and the road department for what they did. They did a hell of a job. They worked well with us, and I think that they overcame a lot of obstacles to get us through that day. It was not a fun time. But I appreciate what he did and the police and rescue people as well. They put safety first. They were concerned about getting through for future needs, and they took care of that. One of my concerns right now, and at the time Derek told me that I need to be concerned about PennDOT with my lack of a driveway. The road has been compromised, and I know you mentioned PennDOT. I don't know where they are in all this and how quickly they're going to get out there, but it's kind of hard to get into the house. A lot of the debris is in the neighborhood, and I'm sorry about it. Well, we're trying to figure out what to do. But that's some of the concerns I have. I guess it comes down to money and accountability. And, you know, the money was spent, but was it spent wisely? Was it documented in a way that we can look at it and say, change this, change that? But I guess I just want to say thank you again to the road department because they helped us out.
And just to that point, we actually had a meeting today with PennDOT. And not, not defending it. I mean, PennDOT had some major issues up on River Road. They finally got River Road open late last night, I believe it was, late last night. They're working diligently on Taylorsville to get that open for emergency vehicles. And I will have a meeting with them tomorrow. I have that set up at some point in time. And I'll, I'll get you an answer when they're addressing the side of Taylorsville Road by your driveway.
I'm Michael Brendan. I also live in Maplevale. I was not affected anywhere nearly the way my neighbors were. I want to talk about an email I sent with photos to the supervisors, I think was forwarded to the engineer as well, and just talk a little bit about what I could see from my vantage point. I'm at 6 Maplevale Drive, right next to the pumping station. There's two points I want to make. Number one, I know work was done for the drainage at the top of the south side of Maplevale Drive. It doesn't work. The drain pours into the area behind Maplevale, which is partially owned by Aqua Pennsylvania now, I think. And I think it's partially still a township, so nobody's been there. The neighbors actually just mow the area back there or weed whack it. But I think it doesn't work because there's a lot of debris. I'm not going to point fingers at the prior owner of that property who left all his debris there, but it's effectively created a dam. So all the water that comes out that drain wraps around and goes back through the spur at the end of Meadow Drive and just makes that whole area worse for 2468 Maplevale Drive, which again, we're not affected anywhere near the way other people in the neighborhood are, but I might not have been affected at all if that weren't the case. The other point that I made is where those drains are located doesn't catch where most of the water's coming from. Most of the water is coming from the end of Highland Drive. It comes across Maplevale, into Maplevale, across Taylorsville, and it goes along the back of the yards on Meadow Drive and Taylorsville. And it just pours out. You can't really see from the still photos I sent, but the water was, that's where the water's coming from. It's not coming from Taylorsville, immediately west of the south entrance of Maplevale. That specific area of the creek has been an issue since the early 90s. It overflows. Township knows it overflows. I know it overflows because Mrs. Graff, who lived across the street, got mad at me for throwing logs through the ice that was in there in the winter. And then I realized, maybe I shouldn't be doing that. So I started moving logs out. But even if that's the case, even if there's a relatively minor storm, that overflows. There are township police or public works people out there consistently to move logs out of the way. It's always been an issue. It's going to be an issue until that creek is expanded and water's going to be in Maplevale until that creek is expanded. That's where the water's coming from. I think the township 30 years is ample notice that that's an issue, that it needs to be addressed.
Hi, my name is Kim Mummy. I live at 36 Maplevale Drive. I've been in, on Maplevale for about 35 years, and prior to that, I was on Highland Drive. We do have a great neighborhood. I'll reiterate what my neighbors have said. As a matter of fact, a couple of my neighbors, Mark Shrepko, his son Glenn Jeffries, who's not here, another neighbor, Ken Pesta, were great at emptying the storm drains during the, the drains during the storm. One of the things that I mentioned to Dan, who has been very informative, and I appreciate that. I've passed the, some of the stuff he's passed along to the neighbors, is can we have emergency workers from now till when we're sure this isn't going to happen again, that are able to come and do that? You know, be the ones that are there letting you guys know if there's a problem and also cleaning those drains out. I do reiterate, at the bottom of Highland, growing up on Highland, Highland, there used to be a grate the whole way across Highland. I was recently told that that was changed. Now there's just small areas on either side with a grate. So when that water comes down the hill, which it comes down at a raging force, it comes right over into our neighborhood. So whatever, wherever, I'm pretty sure it used to drain to the left there and then possibly go behind our house. But I'd like to know why. I was told that Greg Hucklebridge, who I know is no longer with the township, that he had something to do with that. But if it's making noise, I mean, that's not right to then have my neighbors' houses be destroyed. This is the first time that I've ever had water, and I had a stream in my backyard, I back up to the north end of Maplevale. There's a drain at the bottom of Highland on Taylorsville that goes nowhere. I don't, and that the state told me when they were doing the road. I mean, that's kind of insane that you have a drain there, a hole or a grate in the road that's going nowhere. I reiterate what he says about the stream. Growing up, that stream was dug out. I mean, even up till however many years ago, that stream was dug out. Back at probably the January meeting, I called in and I asked about that. You guys advised that Pennsylvania owns the waterways, which I appreciate you educating me on that. But why from now, or from January till now, that that couldn't have been done? And the night of the storm, I was actually talking to someone. So you've diverted water now behind our houses? And I asked if that was dug out. So you've now diverted water behind our houses, but it wasn't dug out. So here you've told the water to make a left, and it had nowhere to go. So of course, it's going to come straight across. A couple of things, well, the other one about the sound barrier wall. Was that ever considered the impact that that has to our neighborhood? Because there's no drains there. So all that, so that backs up to the back of Plymouth or Upton and the back of Highland. That water no longer can go down to the state land. So how does that impact us? A couple of things, I'm not sure the gentleman that was speaking before, but it is concerning because I do telecommute and talk to the people that were doing the work there. And when they went to pave the road, I asked them why. There was supposedly a drain that was supposed to go from Taylorsville back through my neighborhood, the north end of Meadow. There were supposed to be two drain things to go into that new, a pipe. There was supposed to be a pipe that went with two drains. I was told that the money, there wasn't money to do that. What impact would that have had on my neighbors in the back of the neighborhood? I guess it's horrible. I, you know, now having water and I wasn't home, my older daughter was. I can't even imagine how helpless some of my neighbors feel. I mean, that's something that you guys all really need to consider. I mean, you're, you're sitting there and there's absolutely nothing that you could do. And we believed everything that was being said, you know? I know several of my neighbors have called in, come to these meetings. I, I think maybe when you go to develop the plan, that can be conveyed to us. And, you know, just so we're able to kind of monitor what you're going to do and how it's going to impact us. So I'd really appreciate you guys. I know I had sent you guys an email. But there's a bunch of questions here about things that were going to be done, that were in place to prevent some of this. So I would really appreciate if you guys would consider some of these points as you're moving forward here.
Good evening. My name is Bill Redner, and I live at 236 Taylorsville Road. I live right across the street from Scott, and I really appreciate you folks listening to my neighbors here this evening. And I hope with some expediency, these actions do take place. But for the immediate future, I know from watching this on Saturday night that the creek which dissects Scott's driveway was the reason for that unfathomable sinkhole in your property. The water just crashes past my house and goes to the back of the neighborhood and caused that problem in this creek. It's been, two years ago, it did the same thing. It's done it several times before. I think for something, rain scheduled again for Friday. We all know what's going on in this country with storms. Something immediately should be done with that creek. If it's just jury-rigged for the time being, until you can implement your full-grown plans. But somebody should get out there within the next 48 hours and look at that creek because this is what caused the problem. That's all. But thank you very much to the supervisors. You people were hands-on. You came down into our neighborhood on Saturday, and you talked to my neighbors, and you were there to comfort them. And thank you very much for doing that. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Tipton. I live off of Creamery Road, and I'm here so that my property, that this doesn't happen. So tonight, there was supposed to be the extension of the plans for the Torbert Farm that is across from me on Creamery Road. And for the final was supposed to be tonight for the cast-off property that's now going to be behind me. That one has been squashed for tonight, but we don't need any more new development. There's now going to be a development behind me. There's going to be a proposed development in front of me. And what was fixed on Creamery Road, there's a drainage right by the farmhouse. You couldn't drive your car. It was up to people's car doors. And there was also flooding on the other side of Creamery Road. I couldn't leave my house, so I can't tell you where it was. But now there's supposed to be proposed development in front of me and behind me, and I don't want this to happen to my house, my neighbor's house. I mean, any development should be squashed until the drainage in the township is fixed or adjusted or something.
Really nervous. But I'm Alex. I live at 220 Meadow Drive in, obviously, this development. And I've lived here my whole life. We have dealt with floods before, but it's the kind of neighborhood that you don't want to have to leave. I'm starting my first year as a nurse this year. And everybody in school teaches you about care fatigue and how when you are, every single day, like you guys, sitting here tonight, having us, you know, express our frustration toward you guys. It's so easy and honestly, a point of success to be able to go home and disassociate, sleep well, get a good night's sleep, and, you know, be your best for the next day. I just ask that you don't disassociate from this. Like, these are my family in such a special way. I've lived, obviously, like I said, I've lived in this house since I was three. We moved actually from a floodplain neighborhood. And I just really ask that, you know, I'm sure a lot of you guys have kids and just understanding like what my family is going through, and it's not even half of what half of these people are going through. I just live in a really special neighborhood, and I, I understand, you know, like what I said about care fatigue. I just hope that you can not, not do that and realize that this is a really special neighborhood and situation. Thanks.
Alex, before you leave, too late.
My name is Lorena Stoddard. I live at 220 Meadow Drive. We've been here before. We looked at your plans. I don't actually even recognize you. Honestly, the guy that was on TV, who was our contractor, was on TV, and he looked like an older fellow my age, heavy like myself. And he said, yes, yes, we're going to do all this stuff. And we actually worked with you. My husband worked with you guys. I, I would actually like to hear your assessment on your, what you already, the Maplevale project that you already did. We'd like to know what you thought about the success of it. My son was home by himself when this happened. He moved the cars. He put the existing sump pumps that we own, because we flood, in the non-floodplain that we moved to because I lived in the borough and I couldn't deal with the water. My house in the borough is lived in the borough and I couldn't deal with the water. My house in the borough has never been flooded since. And I've been flooded three times, three times. And I was here two years ago, two years ago, asking you for help. So all I ask today, sir, Mr. Pockel, who you probably knew, you probably weren't here two years ago when we flooded, as I'm now throwing out everything that I have saved for the last two floods, because I know I can't do it again, because I'm almost 60 this year. And I can't empty my garage, my laundry room, my living room in the basement, the lower level, and my crawl space. I have no Christmas tree. I have nothing left. It's in your dumpsters. And I can't do it again. So could you just do me a favor tonight? Could you give me five sentences on your evaluation on the project called the Maple Vale project that you worked on since January 21, when we flooded the last time? Because you guys promised us all a lot. You all sat here and promised us. It feels the same thing that you're promising us tonight, and I don't believe you. And you paid people for a 10% design plan that I said I would even help you with. And I didn't hear from anybody. So I'd like to just to hear, not an hour, just five sentences on what you think the success was of not cleaning out the creek because it wasn't your job. It was the state. Nobody called every day. Nobody felt the need. Nobody's looked at why our water turns so brown all of a sudden. Maybe only because in the last two years, we have a basin that fills from 95. It fills. That water's not coming from all of the hill. I have pictures here that show water not just coming from Dolington and Highland, but it's coming between the houses. We spoke about the farmland that was developed 10 years ago. There's tons of beautiful homes up there. Their drainage comes between the houses in Maple Vale. Comes right between the houses. It doesn't come down Taylorsville. It doesn't come down. It comes right from the hill and nobody has dealt with that. So if you could just, just appease me in some way and tell me you didn't do a good job, or tell me what, what was successful about that job. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Pockels?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm here. I'm online. The first thing I'd like to say is that we're not done. So we are in the middle of implementing. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Ms. Pock.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, we're not done. So the, the first phase was to install drainage inlets at the intersection of Taylorsville Road and the southern leg of Maple Vale Drive. They did capture runoff. We have, we have photographs that demonstrate that it did capture the runoff. There were some that bypassed on a storm this size. That's to be understood. There, and it did direct the runoff down south of the homes and into the township open space. We did implement as part of the road program. We did lower the center line of the roadway, which it was the intention to provide additional capacity within the road as opposed to up on the lawns. And obviously, a storm of this size, a storm of this magnitude, there are the drainage improvements that we were making and that we have made. Were intended for more frequent storms, smaller sized, smaller intensity storms. Going forward, we are implementing improvements on Highland Drive. We do understand that the stream is, you know, a, a major part of the contributing to the flooding that's in Maple Vale. And so we are continuing to look at that, to, to determine solutions that can keep the water in, in the upper reaches of the watershed, keep the water up there. And so that it doesn't impact this neighborhood.
I just, I just want to, I just want to add something just because it is difficult to, to hear Andy over the, the virtual call here. To the, the woman that was just here with the comment, you know, Andy, I'm, I'm sure you've seen more, these, our township engineer. As I mentioned earlier, my name's Isaac Kessler. I'm our Bucks County Office Manager, part of our, our engineering team. To kind of shorten, as, as you requested, the response. And Andy, Andy kind of alluded to the, the inlets that were installed at Monville at that corner there. It was, it's a, considered a phase one of a, of a multi-step project. Those are, were installed and direct water to that open space, as was already noted tonight. There's debris and things like that in that open space that during this, this flow directed it not in the intended direction. So that's something we're following up with. Did it work this weekend? No, it did not. All right. So it's, can I finish, please? So the, the, the inlets and the pipes, not only in this community, but in this whole region, especially the lower part of Bucks County, were overwhelmed by the storm. That's not to sugarcoat anything, but the pipes and inlets that were installed in this case at the corner there are designed for a certain capacity. The rain that fell over the weekend and these, and this storm in particular, it couldn't handle it, right? If we add 10 more inlets on that corner, the storm over this weekend would not have handled it. So what we look at now is, and that, and then that's why I was saying before, so the goal, and obviously the priority now is to, obviously, we've seen where the main issues occur when the larger volume comes through. The storm inlets handle as much as they can. When the water then goes on from there, that's what we're looking at to address, to make sure that it's, it's managed as best as it can to get to the canal, to get to the creek and not go through areas that we don't want it to go through, particularly properties. So it's already long-winded, but your, the short answer was the stuff installed did not handle the storm over this weekend. That's obvious. We're not going to, you know, beat around the bush on that. The additional drainage in the, in the area of the community and kind of the other streets, there's other stormwater projects planned. They would have been overwhelmed this weekend as well. All right. So the, the focus is beyond that and, and all the stormwater that I've done over my career, it's, it's a multi kind of front approach to try to tackle what you've seen from storms. How much can you feasibly put into the road, right? You can't put a, a 50-inch pipe in a road that needs to drain, you know, half a foot or foot down into the canal or the creek. So how much can you put in infrastructure wise? And then how much can you manage when stuff has to go over the surface? So that, that's, that's the approach we're taking with this on the engineering front. And we look at all the engineering stuff, the calculations, everything else. But we also look at working with what's observed and what's in, in the, in the real world from the storms. So I know it's not as short as I said it was, but the short answer is the storm this weekend definitely overwhelmed what was, what was there. And we're looking at ways to.
If you have a question, you can come up to the microphone, please. Thanks.
Well, our yard was decimated.
Every man in the field, yeah.
Yep, we did. So these plans of yours, are they just a guessing game? That it didn't work? Did you think, okay, this seems like a nice location? Meanwhile, we get flooded from Highland, but that was in the plan, but they never materialized. We were waiting. In fact, when the, the crew came in, unbeknownst to us, we just knew we had to move our cars and we asked them, I would go out every morning, what are you guys doing? What are you guys doing? It depends on who I was able to speak to. Then I finally, I grabbed someone of authority who said, okay, we're lowering your street. We're adding extra drains. And I said, okay, how is lowering the streak going to help us when we get water this high? And he said, ma'am, it's not going to help you. So that was the end of that. The other thing is, it's interesting that you added, to me, it looks like a Band-Aid on a broken arm. You added two drains, but yet the pipe is still the same size. You're going to tell me that that has nothing to do with the water cutting through my property and taking away most of my yard? You're going to tell me that? That can't be possible. It's not a coincidence. You had two drains that.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Please go back to the microphone, because even though we can hear you now, the transcriber who's going to, is not going to be able to hear you. So.
So my question is, how was that going to help the problem? The water coming from Highland? Getting back to April's point, we moved into this neighborhood for a sense of security and to provide a good home for my family, just like you all. But let me tell you, we've been flooded four times and they're always the year, the 10-year, the 10-year flood. It's always a 10-year flood. It's always catastrophic. And that's why the drains didn't work. Well, I could tell you now, I am not 400 years old, that I went through a 10-year, all these, all these floods, 100-year floods. What's infuriating to me is when it rains in our neighborhood, my family and I take watches. It's not a very comfortable feeling, but it's our survival. We stand at the window and luckily, our neighbors across the street, the Gears, have a night, have a, have a motion light. And that's how we can see the road. And we get up to different points during the evening to check the water in the road or to go out in storms to clear the debris. It's always us. We're grateful that we were away when this happened because you know what? One of us wouldn't be here because we would have been swept away. It's not maintained. And the reason why this happened and the reason why everybody's so interested, and it's been in the news, is it was so catastrophic. Lives were lost. That's paramount. But our property is gone. And the reason why this happened was neglect because two years ago, two years ago, two years ago, when the flash flood happened, I spoke to, I believe it was Mr. Majerski, and he had no idea we were getting flooded. And I asked him how this could have happened. And I called, I sounded the alarm and I said, the pipe is compromised. And then we had many more officials come out and take a look at it and assured me that the pipe between us and April, April's yard, it was all exposed. It was getting washed away and we were sounding the alarm and no one listened. Well, now you are all listening, but guess what? It's at another flood that we also have to endure. We don't have flood insurance. None of us do because we don't live in a flood, a floodplain. All states telling us, we're not going to get covered for any other damages to our homes. Yeah, we don't have a yard. We don't have a home to live in. We thought we were going to come home to a home that was going to be condemned. Have you ever had to live through that? I never have. Four floods and they're getting worse. They're getting worse and nothing is getting done. Nothing is getting improved. We're telling you it's the creek. It's always been that creek. You know that. Fix it. Fix the problem. Fix it at the source. Don't put lame drains that don't do anything for us. It has to be done higher. It's like a waterfall coming down to us and our house is the lowest point. Our house is the lowest point. And that's why it ripped through. We had no chance. That land had no chance. What's it going to take for there could be corrective action and not Band-Aids on a broken arm? Not another, another grate added to it. How is that going to ever help us? It wasn't. And I think you all knew it. But you know what? Placate them and more developments. Where does that leave us? You're going to rebuild our land? Yeah, you're going to rebuild our land. What, for the next collapse? If it's not addressed, it's never going to improve. That's all I'm going to say.
Louise Gears, I live at 17 Maple Vale. I live across the street from the Luzackis. Something I think that needs to be clarified is this flood was a teeny bit worse for us, but you have to understand the three floods prior to this were just as evil. My husband is out there. The Luzackis are out there. We have one other neighbor that comes out. The drains and all the water gathers at the center of the horseshoe at our houses. They're out there pulling. There was one flood where Larissa was out there and I thought she was going to get sucked into the drain and drown. I do not understand in this community that we live in, with all the resources that we have, how we're allowing this to go on. I do not understand. If it was your homes, would you allow it to go on? We've been here. Numerous neighbors have been here, meeting after meeting, pleading, begging, trying to plan. If there's something the state needs to do, can you give us that resource to get the state to come in and work with us? I would think someone here has that kind of connection, that kind of resource to help us. We are crying to you and pleading for help. We don't, we don't want to hear stories anymore. We want you to be able to give us a solid plan of how this water's going to be diverted, coming from all these different areas. It's not one area and it's pouring into our neighborhood. Please don't think that this particular one, because everybody was saying flash flooding and people, people lost their lives. This was worse because I've watched three others where I've watched them almost, their boys pulling from drains. Where's the township when that's going on? Where you're all in your home watching the rainstorm with your children nice and warm. And that, isn't that what we all just want? I just, please help us. We don't want anyone to die that lives in our neighborhood. Nobody wants that.
My name's Robbie Kohler. I live at 14 Maple Vale. I'm one of the newest people in our neighborhood. I live across the street from all of them, along the canal. My perspective is a little bit different. I bought this house in March and the flooding was a humongous point of contention before I bought it. I had so many extra inspections done. I didn't quite trust what the seller was telling me. Ultimately, they told me there was a storm in 2021. I got a nice finished basement and a nice downstairs and bathroom and appliances and all that out of it. So eventually, I didn't know what to do. Kept fighting it through my attorney or attorney and my realtor. No flood insurance. You're not in a floodplain. The thing that finally got me to cave in to buy this house over that issue was the seller told me that the township had told them that they'd come in and fixed it. That they'd come in and done work to start changing it, making sure this doesn't happen again. I lived there alone with my 11-year-old son, full-time, full custody dad. Not a lot of us. He's traumatized. There's no flood insurance. My tab is up to $95,000 so far and that includes my car. And it wasn't that great of a car. That's for repair. That's for cleanup. My son's on the front porch with a bread pan, trying to get the water to not come over that last little inch into the top floor, front door. We already had three and a half feet downstairs. I'm cutting down boxwoods with a chainsaw to get the flow to go around. There's a lot of people asking questions. Only a couple of y'all are talking. I don't know how this works. I don't know if there's going to be a review later and you're going to make an announcement, but I wouldn't mind some answers now into what are we doing? I've heard all about what you want to do with the dirt. I've seen all you guys coming into the neighborhood. I've seen you coming in packs. Everybody wants to see the sinkhole. Doesn't always feel like you're going to see the sinkhole for the people that live there. Nobody's coming to my house. Jim came by today and I kind of had to yank him out of the street when he was walking by. That's the first person I've talked to. More than just a sinkhole, it's people. This is an amazing community. I can't leave. I don't want to leave. Can't sell a house now. This is national news. I have friends from all over the country going, hey, you're in your yard, you're right. And the pictures they're showing me is my fricking yellow house on the news broadcast around the country. If I help us, we need funding. This is money, astronomical money on things that could have been fixed or at least prevented. There's things in my yard that could have been done to keep this from being a four and a half foot double river. Yeah, you guys don't seem to understand where this water's coming from. Double river, one straight down, one from the side. How are y'all going to help us with that? I've got $10,000 estimates for a guy with a bulldozer to come do this part for me. I'd rather you guys do it. I've seen the bulldozers. Where's the answers? Where's FEMA with this? Where's disaster relief? Heard a little bit about what you did over the weekend under a strange source of chance there, but you're talking to some of the people that should be able to make these decisions. Where's the state? Where is that process? That's an actual question. Does that make?
Couple, couple of things that are going on and you're talking about people that have been back there to look at the hole in, in the neighborhood. So you've probably seen. Myself and John out there. You've seen.
No, I haven't.
I, I was the guy that talked to you when you were on your mountain bike. I had a baseball hat on.
Oh. Looky, look, I didn't know. There's so many more people wandering through our neighborhood.
No, I understand. I understand.
Campaigning yesterday.
Yeah, that's besides the point. But cou- couple of things. So DCNR, there was a meeting today with DCNR in, in the field. About the canal, about the hole, because that backs up the DCNR. So they're involved. They have to be involved. That's obvious. Also. I called, I called the DEP because they also have to issue emergency permits to, to do things along the canal. So that meeting's going to happen in the field sometime. I think Jim, you were coordinating times. Early next week, they're going to be in the field. To work with us to approve a plan and emergency permit so we can get rolled. That's, that's most important for April and in the cases that obviously. That's going to happen very quickly. After that, this is a multi-tiered approach, right? Everyone's talking about obviously fixing the hole first, making sure homes are secure.
Agree.
That's number one priority, health, health and welfare, safety. Absolutely. The other.
The people that live in the whole house. That doesn't seem to be as exuding.
Let me, I'll keep going. Okay? We don't really know each other. I know most of the people in this room because I live in the neighborhood.
That's why I can say anything I want, not.
I understand. So next, next up, that phase two that we keep hearing about, trying to do the inlets on Highland and then. All that stuff, starting to clean that little bit of stream. That's going to happen quickly too. We're trying to get the state to approve that so we can do it ahead of getting any funding and get reimbursed afterwards. That's what we're trying to do. That's what Senator Sanosiero is looking at. That's what Representative Warren, that's what we're talking to the governor's office about. Anyone and everyone who can get their ear. And I encourage everyone to reach out to them as well. I know that some of them have been in the neighborhood, but keep it up.
But what are they saying back?
So. I'll keep, I'll keep going. So those inlets on Highland. For, just so you know where they're going. It's going right in front of my house where the, where the pavement was ripped up when the water was rushing down, where all that pavement's ripped up, my driveway's ripped up. That's where those inlets are going. Will it, will it solve the problem? No, it won't. For, for smaller storms, it'll help. For this stuff, no. For anything greater than a hundred. The 1% chance annuals, I don't want to say 100 here because I hate that term and it's not even the right technical term anymore, just so you know. So that storm. Once that stream overtops. The, the watershed. That includes that stream is I actually, it's 364 acres. Right? It goes all the way up to Woodside and Dolington, all that farmland back there. Through all those developments across 295, all those basins. Then it comes down. Right? I lost Scott in the back there, but it goes under his driveway. And then it loops behind Maple Vale to the north. It even picks up a little bit from the, the basin, the new court, uh. What do they call it? The, the new cloverleaf basin on, uh, 295 that they put in recently. So all that's coming behind the homes, right? So that, that's the next big thing to everyone's point. We need to clean up that stream. We need to. Get into that watershed and look what we can do to improve those basins because there's probably 10 of them along the route. And what, what was it Derek? Saturday night, we drove all of them to see where they were, what they were doing and every one of them was full. Every single one of them. So it doesn't start at Highland Drive. It doesn't start at Dolington, doesn't start at the Stebbins or sorry, the Skinner's driveway. It starts all the way back up at Woodside and Dolington. So to your, everyone's point, the big issue to deal with that is to look to see what we can do. And it's not going to be one big thing in one area. It's probably going to be a series of projects, what we call, and I work in this world. Best managed stormwater, best management practice. It's going to be a series of these things along that chain, along that stream. To try and slow down the water, to try and manage the water, try to direct the water. It's not, it's no small potatoes. But that's what we have to do. We have an MS4 permit for the, that's a municipal stormwater permit for the township. That's going to be, has to be part of that consideration. It has to be. And it has to be quick. Now we, from funding purposes. How do we do that? We can go for state funding, sure. But there's a lot of, a lot of municipalities in the state. That are also looking for, for funding for different things, right? I, I know not everyone comes to all these meetings, but for the last six years that I've been on the board, I've been screaming about infrastructure and having a plan for stormwater management. Right? We have. We just sold our source system for 50 some odd million dollars. That's in a trust now. I'd like to explore how we might, because these projects are so big, can we use any of that money now? Towards these, towards this type of stuff because it's necessary. We have, what do we? They approved about a. One and a quarter million dollars for new park and rec projects this, this year that haven't been built yet. Can we just say, you know what? Forget these park and rec projects. Let's go build this infrastructure to keep people safe. Right? I, I, I don't disagree with. I don't disagree with you at all, but we have to look at ways to get this funded and get it done quickly. So that they can get executed and everyone here, you know. Saturday evening at dinnertime, I can see where I, you don't know where I live. A lot of these people do. Right? Where I live, I can see it rushing down Highland. I can see the pavement coming off the end of my driveway. I can see the pavement being lifted. So as soon as we can, we go down to the end of Highland to see how, just how bad it's flooded, right? Back, I think everyone here probably remembers May of 2018 was the last time that I remember. Taylorsville getting flooded up to Highland at that same callber, right? I was, I was checking my, my photos on my phone from, from the last time that happened. That paled in comparison to what we saw this time around. Water elevations were pretty, pretty stinking high, but the rate of flow that we saw ripping down the road, so much higher. And it was scary to see. So. There were, I remember, um. Who, uh, who's your next door neighbor that was having the party with all the people from out of state that lost their cars? Mr. The Gambles, yes.
Yeah, I live next.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know. Yeah, they lost what? Five, six, seven, eight, eight cars. Yeah. I remember the.
Look at mine, Pat.
Yeah. I understand. They had the Lincoln that was, I remember the, putting on my rubber boots and getting around there just to. Eventually when the water receded, to push the Lincoln out of the, Lincoln out of the road so they could tow it.
Yeah, it was the Prius almost coming to my front.
I saw the Prius as well, was lifted up there. So like. This is, I know you all get it, but this is real.
It's real. It doesn't sound like there's anything preventing it happen tomorrow again. And that's what's scary. The word helpless came up and there is, it's helpless. We feel.
Yeah.
Helpless.
It was scary watching it from the other side of the road. Yeah. It, it really was because we, I, I didn't feel safe walking across the road. And this is what I do for a living. You know, I, I grew up in Maine where they liked to vacation in the woods, going through water rapids and all that other stuff. I didn't feel safe crossing the road. That's, that's how bad this was. I get it. And we, we eventually made it in, you know, chief. Got there very quickly. Derek got there very quickly. Dave came from South Jersey, got there very quickly. Their public work staff came in to do what they can do. That helps the recovery. It doesn't help.
Very quickly into our neighborhood?
But.
Because it went a good three or four hours for anybody showed up.
Well.
And I'm watching, I'm calling 911 and we're on our own. We got our neighbors. Young kids out here ripping open storm drains to unclog them. I, at the time, I just wondered where the hell is everybody else? But. I was in my own crisis mode with my son.
I, I know by eight, by probably 7:30, 8 o'clock, folks were coming into the neighborhood from the township when, when the water started to recede. Cause I was, I was already in there myself making the phone calls. So I, I know that. I saw April, I saw these folks. Well, I saw you the next day. But it was a mess. It was, it was not safe. It was scary. I, I get all of that. But we, we need to immediately fix the yards, stabilize things. We don't want to, there's more rain. We've had rain all week. Hell, we've had rain all month for trying all that. We need to stabilize these things. We're working on that. The state's working with us to do it quickly. We've. We were making phone calls to local developers to see what. What dirt they might have on their developments that they could bring in quickly. So they came by to look to see what they could offer. You know, so we're. I know our staff, everyone you see in this room on staff has been. Putting their heads together nonstop. We've had a lot, lots of phone calls, lots of site visits, lots of talk to different people we know to see how we can, how we can immediately. Fix the most. Most important issues mainly. Your, your, your neighbors immediately adjacent to you. But then to your point. We have to get into the stream. We have to clean the stream. We have to implement phase two quickly. And then we have to look. In addition to cleaning the stream, we have to look at the entire watershed. Right? The entire watershed, just as, as this gentleman in the, in the back who came up talking about the streams, we have to look at the entire watershed to see what we can do. To. Even in a 100 year or bigger storm, the 1% or worse storm. To make sure that we can. Protect you. Will, will your street still flood in a 100 year event after everything is done? Probably. But will it flood your basements? Will it flood your homes? Will it knock out your yards? Will it float your cars away? That's what, no, probably not. I lived in South Florida where this stuff happens. A lot more regularly. And we did a lot better stormwater design back then, back even down there, even though the roads flooded, we were able to build. So that things would not, you know, people's lives were not in danger.
So it's pretty clear. We're all admitting there's a problem here that's not going away anytime soon. So is there a mechanism to be able to get us to be able to get flood insurance? So we're not totally high and dry.
Uh, I, I believe Mr. Majuski, uh, was giving us some information, um, during executive session regarding flood insurance. So if he, if you'd want to share that with, with everyone.
Yep. Flood. Well, uh.
It, please, please, everybody.
Yeah, just, just, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, we're not. Ho- hold on a sec. We're not talking about designating it a flood plain. It's a different, it's a different alternative.
Currently FEMA requires that any federally backed mortgage. Have flood insurance if you are. In a designated flood zone. Your properties, with the exception of the very rear portion of your yard. Where the canal is. Is not in a designated flood zone. Therefore flood insurance is not required. However, you can still get flood insurance from FEMA. Uh, and as a matter of fact, your rate is very low because of that, because. On their books, the risk of flooding is very low. Now, in reality, we know that the risk is a little higher than. What they think because of the way it's mapped. But you can get flood insurance from FEMA for that. And if anyone would like to contact me tomorrow, I can put you in touch with some people who could hopefully help you out. Uh, FEMA does not cancel flood insurance on people. Uh, your rates. May go up, but, uh, they aren't canceled. They should have.
Maple Vale is a navigable bottle of water all day Saturday.
Well, one thing that flood insurance doesn't, does not cover, and we actually have some brochures out in the lobby. That you can go take a look at. Uh, if your, some pump. Stops and your basement floods. That's not considered a flood event, therefore that would not be covered. Where you have a stream jump the banks. And go and, uh, go into your home. And destroy the lower level as many of you had experienced. That is something that is a covered event by FEMA. But there are limitations on that, on personal items. Uh, however, uh. There are flood insurance is available for all of your major. Uh, systems, your flooring, your drywall, your electric. Your hot water heaters, your, all of that stuff.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Answers. So we need. Timely in a way we can all hear them fast. Thank you. Anyone else? Take one more.
And we do have a couple of people online for Public Common as well.
Okay, Erica, thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh, my name is Nicole Mummy. I live at 30. Vale. I have lived there my entire life. These people are extensions of my family. I mean, I would run across the yard to Mary Frepko's house when I was little. I babysat Raina's kids. Shelley's kids. She's lived next door forever. I was home alone with three dogs. My grandmother who lives at the top of Highland is 92. I couldn't get to her. So if something would have happened in an emergency, I couldn't leave. And I couldn't leave my animals because if my house would have flooded. Never has there been water behind our home, ever. Shelley's husband comes out the door and says. The mummy's backyard is a lake. So I go out back. I, I don't know what to do. I'm an accountant. I don't deal with water. Like this is what you guys are supposed to fix. And if you're diverting the water behind us, you can't just expect the ground to absorb it. Especially if it's a flash flood. Why is there not a big canal leading to the canal? You know? There has to be. Plans that actually make sense and are actually going to fix the problem. I understand it was a lot of water in a short amount of time. But there, there's no reason this should have happened. The stream or creek or whatever you want to call it should have been dug out. I. Since I've lived there forever, I've never seen it that bad. I was watching it pour over. The Wattses and the people who live next door to them who just moved in, I was watching water pour out of their backyards. Never, ever have I seen anything like that because the water was coming across Taylorsville. Through those homes and then through their homes onto Meadow. But there's nowhere for the water to go on Meadow and the drain that you put at the opposite end of Maple Vale. That's not going to collect the water that's actually coming in the neighborhood. So I agree with all of them. Something needs to be done. And if it's going to rain on Friday, maybe you need to clean out the creek.
I'm Michael McBeek. From 24 Maple Vale. And I have a couple of quick points. Um, our damage was less than a lot of other peoples. We've all heard about all the issues. I don't want to waste time on that. But there should be a resource point from the township. Listening, everybody who can help. The FEMA information you talked about. Um, so far only these two gentlemen have given direct answers to some of the questions. There are answers out there. You should research them. They should have them. For the home repairs, I happen to work for Habitat in the home repair department. The county has pro- program, Habitat has programs, help people with houses. It is income qualified. So probably only the seniors in this neighborhood can get it. But they should be aware that there's help out there. Um, help with FEMA. People from the township for the cleaning up. There's seniors who can't clean up their own yards and their own basements. Um, the neighbors here have been great, helping one another. But. The township comes in. They look at it. They walk away. There are resources they can do to make it easier for these people. That aren't an arm and a leg. Secondly, this is phase one. You don't have a phase two if you don't have budget for it. Uh, you can call phase two, you can call phase 12. If there's no budget for phase two, you don't have a phase two. This is a one-phase project. And. It's, we need the information in a timely manner, an easy way to get. What can help people today with the past problem? And. What is going to be in the future with the timeline? Telling you, talking with SEPTA or the road pandemic this week. That's information. When? Is the, what report going to be in for their yards? It, it should take a week to do your engineering report. It should take a week to get the permits. I don't know what materials you need. It could be a week. It could be a month to get the materials. But there should be a timeline laid out for when those things are going to be done. And how can you stabilize their yards before you do the work? Because especially the one house. It needs stabilization now. For a little bit more issue, isn't going to wait for one more, two more heavy rains. That house needs to be stabilized now. That yard, that corner needs to be stabilized. This week. Even if it's temporary caissons. It needs to be stabilized this week for that one house. Thank you. If anybody's, if anybody has questions about the repair program, just see me afterwards.
So. I was going to say, sir, um, the township has been asking everybody to register to basically tell if you've been affected by the flood. So. You can, uh, email at admin@lmto.org. I've also put a link. Up. It's available for you to enter a form. What we're looking to do is collect everyone's information. So far we have 29 households that have been directly impacted by the flood. We want to track everyone who's been impacted so that we can easily communicate with all of you. So that as we know about either plans or programs that are affect you, we can quickly get to all of you and consistently that everybody gets to hear. If there's someone who does not have email, right? Or does not know how to use email and you can call the township. Katie McVan will take your name, number, and, and we will find a way to make sure that we're communicating with all of you. Uh, on programs, whether it's, uh, PMA, which is the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. Uh, or counting programs as we go forward.
You're collecting our information, but you're not giving me your information. Who can help these people now? Who do they call about the road? Who do they call about that one yard? Who do they call about home repairs? There are resources out there and we're not getting that information from you. You're collecting our information. You have my photos. You have my name and email. You're collecting our information, you have my photos, you have my name and email address. I've heard nothing back about it. And, and it should be a bulletin board, a website, a page on your normal saying about the flooding and the resources. It's not a complicated thing to put together.
Erica, who's online?
Our first caller is Laura, and I'll bring her into the room now. And Laura's in the room with us now.
All right, Laura, give your full name, and if you're a Lower Makefield resident, then make your comment.
Yes, hi. I want to know if it's, I, I don't want to say anything that's inappropriate because I feel awful with the people that have had all these.
Laura, can you, can you do your full name, please?
Oh yeah, Laura Kazar. 38 North Flint Court. Lower Makefield.
Go ahead.
So in regards to flooding and water runoff, I have a, I have a sinkhole at the end of my driveway that has been repaired by the township twice. And it's sinking again. I had someone out to look at it again, and they told me it's not bad enough to fix again yet. I don't know what's underneath the road. And I don't know if anybody knows what's underneath the road because obviously when floods happen and sinkholes happen. But in the near future, we have the cell phone tower proposal, which is directly behind my house. I already get water rushing down between my yard and my neighbor's yard. And I just want that to be something in the minds of everybody on the board coming forward that I pay taxes, my neighbors all pay taxes, like everyone in the township. And the water issue should not be ignored when talking about the cell phone tower. Because they're going to be putting impervious surface behind our houses and taking away natural vegetation. And that causes more water runoff. I'm a hairdresser, so I don't know all the technical things. But I do know that when it rains even a slight bit, the end of my driveway where my sinkhole is filled with water. And I can't get to my mailbox, which isn't a big deal, but I can't get to my mailbox because it's too deep. So I just, you know, that's it, I don't want to step on anybody's toes with all the tragedy that's happened this past weekend. But I just want that to be noted, that we have a, we have a water issue over here, too.
We understand, Laura.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Renee, I can bring her in right now as well.
Okay.
Renee's with us in the room now.
Great. Hi Renee, give your full name, and if you're a Lower Makefield resident, and give your comment.
Hi, I'm Renee Barber, I live at 7th Lower Hilltop Road. I'm like at the top of this neighborhood. My house flooded, my water heater, my heater, my washer dryer, my kid's room, everything's lost. My backyard is just part of it's gone underneath our fence, we had to put boards over it to keep our dogs from coming. Our, the bank of this little creek thing. My husband spoke to somebody at Public Works and they told us that we own the creek and we have to fix it. I don't have the money for this. I don't have the money to replace my appliances, I don't have the money for any of it. Like fortunately, our neighbor caught this and had my kid move our vehicles out of the driveway. It flooded so bad, it's on all of these little neighborhood Facebook pages, you can see videos of my house flooding, my neighbor's yard flooding completely straight into my house, my garage, everything. And we were just told, no, we're not covering it and you guys are responsible for fixing this. And there, we were told when we, I've only been here for a little less than three years and I, like, we were told that this was just a new project of 95 and it's all diverted and it's all great. And then I find out that I suddenly own this problem and this creek. And I just want you guys to realize, like I know Maple Vale's at the bottom of my hill. I'm at the top of my hill and I'm still, it's been five days and I'm still not done anything, like we are digging out still. And I'm like, nobody's come to help us, nobody's come by. The only people that came by were the guys that pulled the stumps, these giant stumps that would have killed somebody if they hit somebody in the creek. They're the only people that have been by my house. Like nobody's tromping around my neighborhood, nobody even cares that we're up top here. And I'm, I'm dealing with just as much crap and I'm, we're going, we're going end up probably having a foreclose on our house because we can't afford these repairs as well as maintain normal living. And I want to know how to get help, somebody needs to pay for it. My insurance brushed us off and that was it. And the township, or Public Works, told us it's our responsibility, you get to fix the creek. I didn't put the creek there, I was told it wasn't a thing. I was told it was a dry creek that was runoff at wintertime. I wouldn't have bought this. I wouldn't have moved to Yardley if I knew this was an issue. I need somebody to come to my house, 7th Lower Hilltop House, talk to my family and find out what's going on here as well as down at the bottom. I feel for you guys because I can't imagine that, but I've got it here, too. And just drive by, you can see it, all the crap that's sitting at the end of my house and then to my driveway that needs to get thrown away, you'll figure out my house. I just, I just want you to, I mean, I know you're saying it's up here and it's water said thing, so I appreciate knowing that you know it's coming from the top. But I also want you to know that there are not too many people up here got hit by it, but I did. I did, my neighbor next door got a little bit of it, my neighbor across the street got it too. They went right into their family room. And I'm like, my kid, my kid can't even live in his house. I can't put him in mold, I can't, his stuff is my, we can't walk through our house. Stuff, I'm just finally got stuff off our porch. Still have stuff in the backyard I got to deal with. My mother-in-law has been working non-stop trying to help me, and my, my husband and I are still working full-time jobs. So I go to bed at midnight after just working, 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 and working, and working, working. So I would appreciate somebody telling me how to get help and acknowledging the fact that it's up here and maybe telling me it's not my problem to fix a creek that's supposed to be fixing the problem.
Fred, if I, if I can real quick, because I've been in touch with Ms. Barber's husband. Ms. Barber, we, we haven't met, I'm your neighbor down the hill. I saw your, your home at, on Lower Hilltop, I saw the same thing happen on Edgemere. Very similar, it's the same stream that eventually flows down to this, the area we're talking about. In your case, so your, your husband Josh, he, he contacted me and forwarded me some photos, so I put him in touch with our township manager and township director, Public Works. So they're going to be reaching out to, to your, to you and your husband to to, to look, I hate saying it this way, but to look into the issue to see what we can do. But part of the Barber's issue is that there's a basin right behind their house, coupled, coupled with a stream, that stream makes about a 90-degree bend right at their property line. So you have a discharge from a basin and a 90-degree bend from that stream at the same spot right in the back corner, where she's talking about the fence and the shed and everything else. So and, and those homes all got flooded too, their basements, their, their, their splits, very similar to Maple Vale. But they happen to be at the low point in these little dips in both Lower Hilltop and Edgemere. When you walk the neighborhood, you'll, you'll know what I mean. But they're going to be getting, re- reaching out to you and your husband to to, to take a look at, at the issue and to see what can be done. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Okay, because when he talked to Susan, she told him it's enough. So I don't know who Susan is in Public Works, but she just.
The Director of Public Works is sitting about 12 feet from me and he, he's gonna, he's gonna reach out to you.
All right, thank you.
Renee, can I?
I know you guys can't control water, like I know you can't control the rains and the amount of rain, but I get that. But I don't like being told that, oh yeah, by the way, it's all on you. So.
Renee, when, when did that conversation take place, just out of curiosity, that with the, with the, with the Public Works Department?
So I, I just, for the, I, I was out there at her property, I would say, on Sunday after the storm, just assessing her culverts to check structural stability of them. And I did meet with her husband. And at the time, I, I, you know, met with him, gave him my business card, I said, reach out to me, I have no information for him at the time in order to stabilize the stream bank, that I will look into it and send me an email, which he did. And I've yet to find that out information, I asked in the, wait a few days, I mean, we're dealing with it all over the township, so.
I get that.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I don't know if, I believe the way your husband said it is, in the past, he was told that it was his stream, his issue. And, and I just want to make you understand that, that, you know, I, I don't know whoever said that in the past, but obviously if there's a stability issue on the stream, we're going to get the resources that it, that it needs to stabilize that stream in your backyard, side yard there.
Okay. So I can sleep at night, not thinking I have to put thousands of dollars into a creek.
Renee, we'll do everything we can for it, if that's possible.
We have a gentleman up at the mic now. He was trying to get to the mic when you went to the phone, so I'm just going to let him give his public comment and they'll go back to the phones.
I heard a Lincoln mentioned.
We need your full.
A Lincoln that was in the middle of the road.
Sir, we need your full name and just that you live in Maple Vale, I assume.
I, I, I live in Lower Makefield Town, she was visiting somebody on Maple Vale. But the Lincoln, the water pushed it out in the middle of the road. But my son and a couple other guys managed to push it back and I thought it was legally parked when we left because we were able to kind of push it. Because the car wasn't going anywhere, it's never going to run again. But anyway, I mean, the only thing I got out of it was about a $600 bill for towing my car away. And I think it was parked okay when I left, it wasn't in the middle of the road. But I said 600, it might have been 550, I don't know. Anyway.
Sir, sir, just before, sir, sir, can, can you, just because there were a couple of people speaking when you were, when you were introducing yourself, what, can you just repeat your first name and your last name, just for the record, just so that?
Thomas Kabika.
Thomas Kabika?
07 Freedom Drive.
Oh, that was enough, we, we just want to make sure that, that, that your name is recorded, that's all.
Okay, we'll go back to the phones.
Get to the tow of that vehicle and see what, what happened with that.
Thank you, Jim.
16 Maple Vale, when those tars at my party were towed, you told me they were not going to be charged. Yes, you, you, you told me, then you told me you were going to tell me where they were taken to because they came from all over the state. And I was never informed.
Yeah, I, I didn't speak to you about any vehicles, however, when we.
You're the police, chief of police.
Ma'am, it was, I was, I was with Mr. Fuller.
It's the three of us were here, ma'am. Just when we had an officer finally, once the flood orders were received, we got in there. We, we saw that there was multiple vehicles that could become a potential issue if, again, they were calling for more rain that night, so our, our. And, and, and I believe we were finding out from duty tow to make sure that they were just gotten out of the street for safety purposes. And in terms of cost, I'm pretty sure that those costs were not to be passed on to the resident.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what we're going to look into and ensure that, yeah, I mean.
So chief, 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 that was communicated, again, as Derek has indicated, Derek was there, myself and supervisor Grunier were there at that time. And again, we, we communicated that there was to be no cost incurred by the residents as a result.
When duty, when duty tow came out there, you pointed the cars out, which you wanted towed at that point? Okay. It was Robbs that did all the towing? All right, I'll check, I'll check into that. We'll get together tomorrow and you give me a list of the cars and we'll do that.
Yeah, so those invoices should be directed to us, to the extent that they, yeah, okay.
We'll go back to the phones, Erica.
Yes, we have David on the line, I'll bring him in now.
Okay.
And David's in the room with us now.
Hi David, give your full name, if you're a Lower Makefield resident, then give your comment.
Hi, my name is David Rishel, I live at 220 Meadow Drive in Yardley. And I've been there to speak with you folks before on this very topic and sadly, I'm back. And I apologize I couldn't be there in person today because I'm also a public official and I'm in State College, Pennsylvania, where I'm running the transit system, so I understand how public systems work. I don't want to rehash what everybody has said tonight because there's been a lot of eloquent making of points here. The biggest one that steps, tips out to me, and I hope it does to you as well, is the most important mitigation measure that the township had identified was clearing the stream. That was the one that matters. Because the solution to this problem is not additional drains on Maple Vale. It's not changing the grates at the bottom of Maple Vale. It is stopping the water from getting in to the neighborhood to begin with. And that's going to require three things. Clearing the stream, which again has already been identified, replacing the grates on Highland the way they used to be, and making sure there's some kind of drainage along Taylorsville so it doesn't flood everybody's yards every time it rains. That's what has to happen, and these things have been identified before. And the question that I'm asking is why? Why didn't these happen? These have been talked about for years and nothing is occurring. And this is really ultimately about accountability for performance. We've had some fine engineers here talk about plans, talk about studies, talk about ways to go about this. And yet things aren't occurring. And we've had a lot of fingers pointed at the state. I can't think of the number of times that we've been told, well, we can't fix the streams because it's the state, state's jurisdiction. We can't do anything without the state. We've known that this is a state issue for years. So why hasn't the state been engaged as a partner to make this happen? If the professional staff in the township can't get anywhere with the state regulators, then that's what our elected officials are for. Because then they should be talking to people like Harry Warren, they should be talking to Senators Santasiro to make sure that the state plays ball with us to get these things done. Frankly, that's your job to make these things happen. You can't just sit there and say, well, it's the state, so we can't do anything about it. We have to work with the state, we have to make the state perform and give us the permissions that we need to do this work. And when we talk about how we haven't been able to make that happen, we talk about how we don't have the money. Let's be honest, the truth is that this simply has not been a high enough priority to make happen. Because government gets done what is important for government to get done. And this has not been a priority that has garnered the resources to push this through, to get the state to play ball and to make this occur. And this needs to become a priority. And I'm really speaking to our elected officials now, not the professional staff. But you folks run this township. The professional staff work for you. And it's your job to make the professional staff perform and hold them accountable to get this done. And, and I, I can't also understand why nothing, nothing has happened to clear the stream. Because we're not talking about bringing in construction equipment and redigging things. But why couldn't there be work crews who could simply go to the stream and start cutting out vines, start cutting out weeds, clearing the waterway? There have been three workdays since this happened. And you can't tell us that it was impossible to engage and do anything because as people have talked about, there are more rains expected. This water course has now filled with debris even more than it was. So its holding capacity is less than it was a week ago. So somebody should be down there tomorrow, cutting out brush to at least improve the passage of water so that if we get additional streams, we don't have flooding again this weekend. And everybody's been talking to the governor and all the state officials who've been down here and have been getting their photos taken. And we certainly appreciate their engagement. But did anybody say to the governor, governor, we need your approval and your help now to get this done? We don't need to have a meeting about it. This is not a complex issue, we need your immediate engagement to do something and to get this done. Because this is about accountability for performance. The township staff are accountable to the supervisors. And supervisors, frankly, you're accountable to the voters. And we are paying attention. And we hope that you will begin to take this seriously, push it forward and achieve results. Thank you.
And we have one last caller on the line, you can bring him in now. All right, our last caller's in the room now.
Hello Guy, give your full name, if you're a Lower Makefield resident, and give your comment.
Yes, Guy Stepanowski, I live in Maple Vale. I'd just like to say that
I'd just like to say that um, most of my points have already been made and they were very, very well spoken. Um, the only thing I would like to add is the retention basins on ninety-five, the new ones that they just put in. Um, the last two floods we've had, they have both overspilled and flown down, flowed down Taylor'sville Road. Um, I think that they should definitely be checked out because the overflows obviously aren't large enough to handle the volume of water. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Guy. Appreciate it.
Yeah, just Fred, if I may, so that was a point of discussion with Pendot today when we met with them, was the adequacy of the infrastructure that was installed as part of the interchange project as well as um, that along Taylor'sville Road. So that, that is something that uh, is being pursued um, as, as we speak with Pendot.
Great, thank you.
With that, I will close public comment.
Fred, we got.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, just one second. David Rishel brought up a great point. If you'll note, Dan, where that stream diverted into our neighborhood, there's a divot there now. I had no idea it was going to rain this Friday, so I'm petrified at this point. But can we do something about that before Friday of somehow shoring up where the stream now thinks at the bottom of, before the bottom of Highland, that it's not supposed to automatically go there? I mean, or at least have somebody here look at that to make sure.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Kim, when you walk your dogs tomorrow morning, can, can you grab me and show me where it is? Okay. Um, Fred, if I could, Fred, is Alex still here?
Actually, public comment is now.
Fred, there's a, there's a GoFundMe page that the residents meant to mention, but they forgot to.
Please, please mention it now if you can.
Alex, do you want to come up to the mic and mention it or do, I, I'm looking at it, but I'll let you do it since it's your thing.
I don't really have much more to say about it other than what I, the caption or the, I guess like the summary about what it is on that you're reading. Um, basically, we just really need money and donations. Um, so I thought that I would use my age and my ability to understand technology to do so. Um, but if you guys know any ways that we could get donations and, not even donations, the money that you guys have in your budget, we need money so badly right now. Um, so that's why I created it. And I have friends out in Pittsburgh, college friends, sharing it on their social media as well. Um, which has had overwhelming support and I'm really thankful for them. But I just think that if we can spread that any way possible to, in addition to, thank you.
And the name is.
And then.
Help for Maplevale families?
And the, oh, sorry, and the name, and the name is um, Help for Maplevale Families. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. All right, that will close public comment. Um, I will say to all those gathered and listening online that uh, as your elected officials, we will do everything possible to expedite um, uh, plans. And uh, if we can shore up things temporarily, knowing that rain's coming, we will do so. And feel free to inundate us with reminders so that we don't put you on the back burner. So thank you again for expressing your frustrations to us so well. And uh, we, we have definitely heard you and we will do whatever we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go to item five at this point, consider approval of minutes for June twenty-first.
Fred, I think some people want to go home, so you are free to go home if you'd like to, so um, we may have chair rustling.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much. Now. April, thank you so much for coming in. No, 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 that's the fun. Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's the week.
Yeah, I mean, I realize it's extreme, but.
Thank you. I'll do everything that I think we all want to do, whatever I can do.
I feel bad for you that Tim daily hates you so much. Well.
All right. Does the board want to continue or do you want to take a little recess?
Okay, Fred, we're ready.
Are we ready? We don't have to recess? Okay, so item five, consider approval of minutes for June twenty-first. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, think about by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Eyes have a five zero. Okay. Uh, item six treasures report, Mr. McCartney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of June, excuse me, June twenty twenty-three interfund transfers in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to approve the interfund transfers for June. Uh, any comment, questions, public comment? Call the question. All those in favor, sign up by saying hi and raise your hand. Hi.
Hi.
Eyes five zero.
Uh, for the warrants list, give me one second.
Sure.
Thank you. Nope, I don't. Um, I'd like to make a, a motion to consider approval of the warrants list from July third, twenty twenty-three, and July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three totaling one point seven nine three million, four hundred and eleven and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. Any comments or questions? Any public comment? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying hi, raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi. Eyes have a five zero. Okay. Item seven is off the agenda. Item eight, engineers report.
Yes, hello supervisors, can you hear me?
Very good.
Yes. Okay. So uh, the first item uh, on the agenda is the um, is to consider the approval of escrow release number two, which is a final escrow release for the Caddis development. This is for the offsite improvements to the Hardestet Yardley development. So this is for improvements in Dobree Road. Uh, this would, uh, final release would be in the amount of sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents. Uh, the work has been completed for quite some time. And so therefore, uh, the, the request came in to, to release this escrow from the developer and therefore, we're recommending escrow release.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to approve the escrow release. Any comments, questions? Public comment?
Dan has questions.
Dan?
Really, really quick, just because Caddis has been a concern for the neighbors, right? Are we, I know we've got this, I'll ask it once, even though we have a couple of different of them here. Um, are we, after review, whether it's Andy or you, right? Um, have they addressed all of the myriad of issues that the neighbors have brought up? We've had landscape issues, we have lighting issues, you, you, you know the history, at least as I do. So you're, you're comfortable and we've gotten good feedback from our, our neighbors?
Yes, and, and uh, I've, you know, Mr. Shinnard has been in contact with me uh, almost a weekly basis, uh, informing me about issues with the fence in between the properties and how they've repaired that. And so um, that, that's item B. This is for the Dobree Road improvements, but yes. Uh, and, and even after we release escrow for the onsite improvements, uh, there is still money that is being held for maintenance. So um, if, if there are issues that come up, they can be addressed through that.
All the road improvements and drainage have been properly constructed?
Yes.
Thanks, that, that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor saying hi, raise your hand. Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Eyes have a five zero. Item B.
Item B is to consider escrow release number two to Caddis Development LLC for the onsite improvements to the Hardestet Yardley development in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. There would be approximately a hundred and nine thousand and change uh, remaining uh, on the maintenance fund.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Grunier. Any comments, questions? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand. Hi.
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 Eyes have a five zero. I'm C.
So uh, there's a cluster of items here, C, D, E, and F all refer to uh, a grant application for uh, the D C E D multi-modal transportation fund grant, which is due at the end of the month. Uh, there, we've worked with township staff and identified uh, three separate areas where um, the, the, the funding, um, this multi-modal transportation fund grant could be applicable to improve pedestrian pathways and uh, the township uh, path system um, throughout the township. So uh, this first one is to uh, consider authorization of matching funds for the commitment letter uh, for the D C D multi-modal transportation fund. I'm sorry?
Uh, no.
I, I'm sorry, I was just handing John the copies of the resolution. I, I was just mentioning that these are the items that Andy's going over now.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. So uh, this is for the Makefield Road streetscape and sidewalk improvements. This would be a five foot wide concrete sidewalk from uh, existing uh, pathways at Sutphen Road. And they would extend up to Makefield Elementary Road. Um, and so the matching funds, the, the, there is a, no match is required uh, by the grant. For this grant, however, uh, only ten percent of engineering uh, costs are covered under the grant. And so the matching funds would then call uh, for, would be for another, the extra five percent that is typically uh, fifteen percent engineering or soft costs for, of the, of the project total. And so uh, that's what the matching funds would be for, for this particular project. It would be for twenty-four thousand dollars.
Your motion?
I moved. Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Grunier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to uh, approve resolution twenty-three seventeen.
This is for the matching funds.
For the matching funds, I'm sorry, I'm C. Any comments or questions? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
Eyes have a five zero. I'm D.
Thank, thank you. Similarly, item D is to consider the resolution number twenty-three seventeen um, uh, for the, the Lower Makefield or Bucks County hereby requesting D C D multi-modal transportation fund grant in the amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to be used for the Makefield Road sidewalk improvements.
So moved. Second.
Move, uh, motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to approve resolution twenty-three seventeen. Uh, any questions or comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, call a question. All those in favor signify by saying hi, raise your hand.
Hi.
Eyes have a five zero. Item A.
Item A is to consider uh, matching funds for, this would, this would cover two projects. Then a multi-use path network improvement. Uh, this would be uh, for gaps in the existing Edgewood Village neighborhood uh, where uh, township staff have identified where uh, connections need to be made from existing paths in order to uh, you know, improve connectivity of multiple paths within the Edgewood Village project. Uh, so this was, would be an eight foot wide asphalt path. Um, similarly, uh, there is an existing path along Oxford Valley Road. Uh, and this would be connecting or extending the, the pathway um, along exist, uh, along Oxford Valley Road down to Stony Hill Road from the existing path. Uh, I'm drawing a blank on the road that it, that it's currently uh, stops that, but if you give me a second, I can.
On Oxford Valley, Emerald?
Now this.
Yeah.
Hearthstone.
Hearthstone, Bradycock?
Yeah, so the existing path is uh, is on Hearthstone. And then this would extend the path from Hearthstone down to Stony Hill Road. So the matching funds letter for this project uh, that we are requesting is for a total of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
Mr. Chair, before I make a movement, I just, or make the movement, I just want to, motion, I should say. Um, I just want to get clarification on the area that uh, Mr. Paco is speaking of. We're, we're having a little bit of an issue figuring out what exactly he's speaking of.
Does the resolution clarify it? Can we see the printed resolution?
Well, I think you're asking for clarification in terms of the limits of the path. Is that, is that what you're asking for? Location on the path. So Andy, you had a plan exhibit. I, I don't know if you're able to share your screen and bring that up or it might be easier to show that.
Okay, um. I'll have to pull that up.
Somebody may have printed it out.
I don't like.
Doesn't like paperwork, but.
Yeah, I don't, actually, I don't know that it's, it's uh, is in that packet. This was information that Andy just sent to us. Um.
So, so is this.
There was a subsequent email I did send to you guys, but uh, I, I don't, it came later, yes.
I, I have a picture of the Makefield one if you'd like to see that.
Correct, yeah, that. Andy, are you pulling it up or?
Yes, I am. So this is the Oxford Valley Road path. Can, can you see that?
Mm-hmm.
So uh, this uh, on the right side of the screen is Stony Hill Road. Uh, this would extend um, an eight foot wide path up to Hearthstone Drive along Oxford Valley Road. This would be the southern side of Oxford Valley Road. So you know, if there was a north arrow here, then the north arrow would be pointing down. Towards the bottom of the pitch.
I'm sorry, is there a, a point of reference for a, a business or something? I'm, I'm still just trying to, having a tough time figuring out where that is.
So the, the new path that was installed uh, along the, you know, i- if you continue from the township building uh, down Oxford Valley Road from Edgewood. Uh, this path would be on the left-hand side, you know, the, the new path goes down to, to Mill, I believe.
Oh, it's so, okay, that makes.
Yeah, it, it, it goes to Mill on the right-hand side and then the path extends on the left-hand side down to Hearthstone. So Hearthstone is the next block beyond Mill. And this would extend the path then from Hearthstone down to Stony Hill Road.
Oh, so basically, north is upside down on the.
Right.
Correct.
So congregation Bethel is at the bottom of the drawing. That little line that comes in, that's the driveway coming into, I'm sorry, to Colomet.
Colomet.
And uh, someone's house we know is on the lower right-hand corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm.
I don't see, I don't see the.
I'm going, I'm going like this.
Yeah, I don't see.
The Woods and Makefield developments on the top of the picture, right below where it says Oxford Valley Road path. Uh, there's detention basin there and Clarendon Courts up a little bit further on the top, uh, where the bike path ends coming down Oxford Valley Road towards Stony Hill. Path ends right where the yellow button is that says start. And then this would continue that path along the south side of the road, uh, to connect into Stony Hill Road and then cross over to where that existing path is all along the south end of Oxford Valley Road that leads all the way down almost to Heacock Oxford Valley Road.
Correct. So essentially that where that start is where the, where the new crosswalk was just done, and then the retention basin is directly behind it.
No, actually, uh, that start button is, uh, several hundred feet away from there. Where that crosswalk was installed at Mill Road, the bike path continues on for several hundred feet and then just stops for the one development.
Understand, okay.
So this will just pick up from there.
Okay.
Continue on down on the south side of the road, all the way to Stony Hill Road with a crossing to get to the existing bike, bike path that's across the street from the Manor Care Facility.
Okay. And Jim, ju- just for the board's information, th- these, just to provide some, like, context, the, these are all segments that were identified as gaps within a planning study that the township had engaged in previously. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And actually, when we did the community trail project several years ago, uh, this was contemplated to be part of a phase two of that project to continue the connectivity all the way down to our existing bike path system that runs along Oxford Valley Road, uh, with one little tiny gap all the way out to Heacock Road.
Real quick, at the end of that run, obviously, at Stony Hill and Oxford Valley, the house that is directly at that corner is pretty close to the corner as it is. Um, how far does the right-of-way extend to that property? Because I'm, I'm sure he's gonna ask.
We may need a little bit of right-of-way right there.
Okay.
Or need to do a little bit of something different there. So that, that's the one point that's has just a little bit of difficulty to it because of the closeness of the house to the road and the right-of-way.
And as you know, there's drainage issues at that corner as well, so making sure that.
And this would help, uh, alleviate.
Alleviate the.
As we're doing that, uh, we are aware of that.
Okay.
We'll take care of that. Uh, the question was, are we using a pervious pathway or not? And that's something we'd have to look at during the development process of the plans. Um, Andy, do you recall if they budgeted out as porous pavement?
Uh, we have not budgeted it out as porous pavement yet.
I mean. So we will need to do stormwater management, or the path would need to be porous pavement, uh, because stormwater will need to be controlled in any way.
Okay.
Jimmy, I love the optimism that you're gonna be able to put a path on that corner. I mean, that house is practically on the corner. It's like, it's like you're gonna have a path to their door.
Yeah, right now, people actually cross over. They take that path, and then they sort of call it chance it, uh, going in that narrow part of the road up around the curve until it widens out and you have a shoulder that is safer to go on. So, um, but that is, uh, something that will need careful consideration.
I mean, the good thing is, is that it's at the end of the run, right, rather than in the middle or, or somewhere else.
Right, it's an area where people are slowing down and/or, um, just starting up.
Gotcha. And then Andy, if you could pull up the Oxford, I'm sorry, the, um, the Edgewood Village one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let me stop sharing for a second. There's actually three separate ones for Edgewood Village.
Okay.
So I will. You see that?
Yes.
So this would be on the east side of Mirror Lake Road. Um, just south of, of Stapler, Patterson Farm, basically opposite of Patterson Farm. That's the first part.
It's on the opposite side of, of Patterson along there.
Yeah, there's. Yeah. Light path that runs in front of the Willow Whisk Farm Development.
Correct.
And then it ends, uh, right past Stapler. And then, uh, this would close that gap in front of those two houses. Uh, the one stone house is pretty close to the road, so that's something that once again would need careful consideration for, uh, the safety and also the history of the house and cooperation of the homeowner, uh, to achieve that. But that would close that gap in time to the path, uh, where the pond is. Uh, there's ponds on both sides of Mirror Lake Road, and that's where the path currently ends.
Question, Jim? Um, how close it, I'm seeing the bend where, where it's labeled, where the word lake is on the second mirror, like the bottom mirror lake road label. Um, there's a bend in the road there, and that's, I'm not sure if that's it or not, where I don't, I can't recall a time when I've driven over that, driven there where somebody hasn't crossed the yellow line coming towards me every, like, every single time.
It is a tricky curve.
It, 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 it amazes me. Is that, is that where we're looking? And will that get us all the way to the intersect? What's the next intersection up there?
Um, Yardley Langhorn Road.
Yeah.
To the bottom of the screen or to the south.
Yeah.
Is the next intersection. Yeah, and that'll take you all the way there and hook up to the whole bike path system in Yardley Hunt and take you into, um, the shopping centers.
So from a, for this, this is two D lines on a map kind of thing. What, what will the actual path look like, like, uh, versus say Woodside where we've, where we have a path versus a typical sidewalk? How, how's this one?
That's a good question. Uh, I think that's kind of to be determined. I think for the most part, we'd like to put in a, an asphalt path just for the consistency, uh, in front of the one house due to the narrowness. We would have to narrow that down and, uh, it'll be, it's a little bit of a challenge, but this will connect our, eventually, uh, the whole northern part of the town to the center of town.
Uh, sorry.
No, no.
Because it's related. Um, getting back to like just driving that road and then having an eight-foot path on the side of it, what is our, uh, I'm gonna use it regardless, but what is the protection for people? It's a forty mile an hour road. People go much faster. They go, they go around that bend pretty quick.
There's actually an existing guide rail there.
Right.
Uh, there's a guide rail at the curve and at the pond. The bike path is protected and beyond.
Behind the guy.
Yeah, the guide rail, yeah, the path is currently behind the guide rail. It will continue in that configuration. And then you get in the straightaway and then you're past the, the danger of, uh, veering off the road.
Again, I, I, I think it's important to note that these are, these are not fully engineered sort of plans at this point. These are concept plans based on a planning document. So, um, you know, some of the considerations that we're talking about as it relates to, um, you know, head separation from vehicular traffic, traveling speeds, those kinds of things, all that stuff, acquisition of right-of-way, all that stuff still needs to be de- determined.
Can, can we swap this one for something else? Because, uh, I'm sorry that I hadn't picked up on this earlier, but, you know, we're talking about the farm and we're talking about future development, meaning making it usable, the farm, so people can access it. And if we're going to build a path on the other side of the street where there's room, if that's something that comes up, that, that would be more logical to me, right? We've, we've said to the E A C, we've said to everyone, we won't do anything on the farm.
Yeah.
So we're technically not on the farm, but we're right across the street from the farm. So can we, you know, maybe, is there another project?
Two separate type projects. Uh, this basically will take a bike path that
I, I.
Starts over there on Yardley Newtown Road, continues down in front of a couple of developments. Then we have that gap of five hundred and seventy feet that cuts them off from miles and miles of trails that lead all the way to the township building from there. Whereas, uh, having potentially walking trails in and around the farm is sort of a separate issue.
I disagree, um, because we've been talking about the, the, the people in that development specifically have been saying, we want a way to get to the farm, and we want to have walking trails. We even got some heat for planting the row of maples. So we can all disagree, but I.
And there's, there's, there's no reason for us, I mean, we don't, we don't inherently have to submit two applications. Again, that, this was, this is an opportunity through M T F. The, the likelihood of us getting two funded applications, quite frankly, from a, from, from a, from a, uh, from the Commonwealth is, I, I, I think is, I, I think is unlikely, to, to be honest with you. Um, and we had some of that discussion and some of that debate, I think, when we were talking about it. Again, there's nothing that prevents you from sub- submitting two applications, but if the board feels that there's constructibility issues with, um, the Oxford Valley project in terms of the sufficiency of space, and there's some desire to hold off as it relates to this, um, this segment, um, y- you know, we, we, we surely can, can do that. That, that's not, that's not a problem.
Want to just table this?
I think the grand.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we.
Application is due, yeah.
Yeah, I think we either decide to submit two applications or we submit a single, single application. Um, uh, again, there's no harm in submitting two applications, but. For, for. Is it, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, for, because it's a gap in, in a pathway that you currently have kind of on both sides there. Um, if it's a matter of accessing, you know, across the way at some point in the, in the future, I would say this might provide additional options of that stretch of where that best crossing might be in the future as well. Uh, so for the connectivity portion, it could be still a worthwhile, you know, grant to, to bridge that gap. And then looking forward, as Jim was saying, for that other project that may be coming in the future, it could give you some more options of where that safest place would be to connect from that side to go across. Something to consider.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion, uh, to consider authorization of matching funds commitment letter to the D C E D multi-modal transportation fund grant for Edgewood Village and Oxford Valley Road Pathway Project.
Second.
Wait a second.
Dan, second.
I seconded Fred, sorry.
Oh, okay. So a motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Granger for the matching funds grant. Application. Any public comment? I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have a four one.
So then similarly, the next item is the resolution number twenty-three eighteen, uh, which is the, you know, township of Lower Makefield of Bucks County would be requesting D C E D multi-modal transportation fund grant in the amount of eight hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, uh, to fund the multi-use path network improvements project.
And Andy, one more time, can you bring up the, uh, the visual for us?
Well, this is, so this would, uh, that, that project, uh, on Mirror Lake, that was, that was one of the items. I can share the screen to, to show the other ones. This next area is the, uh, opposite of, uh, Veterans Square Park along Edgewood Road. It's a five hundred and six-foot, uh, gaff, um, uh, from, from the Giant basically to the corner of Heacock Road.
And along with that would be, um, signalized improvement so that you could have accessible crossings at all four legs of the intersection. Uh, currently, there's only accessibility on the east side of Edgewood Road at Heacock.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a, uh.
Well, and then, and then the third location is along Stony Hill Road. Um, this would be from just north of Fox Hollow Drive, uh, down past, uh, I believe this is uh, roll offs.
It's not showing on the screen, Andy, but, yeah, this would be the section, the bike path is on, um, on Heacock Road and then wraps around where the fire station is and goes a couple hundred feet and then stops. And this would continue it on past Charland Farm, uh, within the right-of-way and continue down to hook up those next couple of developments, uh, which I believe are Fox Hollow Drive and Leslie Lane, maybe?
Les, uh, Leslie, and then there was one across the street, which would be Judith Place. Yeah.
Yeah, and then they, Judith Place could then cross over and then get down that way.
So it would, it would essentially, uh, terminate prior to the train tracks.
Correct.
Okay.
So those are the three areas that would be covered by this grant application.
I'll make a motion to consider Resolution twenty-three dash eighteen, uh, D C E D M T F grant, Edgewood Village and Oxford Valley Road Pathway Project.
Wait a second. Dan, did I hear you?
You can hear me.
Okay.
Um. Later next time.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Granger to approve Resolution twenty-three eighteen. Any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose, nay.
Okay, ayes have a four one.
Fred, do you recall, Fred, quick question for you, because I can't remember, maybe Jim knows. Have we applied for a grant for the Woodside and Taylorsville intersection for signalization to get across?
I don't think so. The grant?
Done that?
Yes.
Have we done that yet? I thought we had.
Yes, there is. Uh, the, that was, I believe that was applied for in December of last year, and we have not heard back.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Andy. Uh, item nine, public works.
Use handle. Uh, I have one quick, easy thing in front of you this evening would be the approval of the fuel purchase. So I, uh, consideration, uh, approval for the fuel contract bid through Bucks County Consortium. Uh, you'll see in your packet that I provided for this evening would be, uh, one difference that we have not done in the past is we actually included the golf course in the purchase this year, uh, in order for them to take advantage of the cost savings of the whole purchases of the Bucks County Consortium. Uh, we would be using, utilizing Riggins for any gallons o- under six thousand gallons, which is the golf course, anything over six thousand, which is us, the complex, we would be doing, uh, Petroleum Traders Corp. Uh, heating oil is just for the golf course. That would be Wilson Oil and Propane. And diesel for us and the golf course would be Riggins, and diesel off-road would be the golf course. If needed, would be Riggins. And the associated pricing is the cost of basically delivery plus the rack price for the time of delivery.
So moved?
Second.
Okay.
Motion made by Supervisor. Wait, hold on.
Yeah, quick question on that one. Do you have a rough idea what the Opus Philadelphia Weekly Five Day Average is? Just to kind of give a sense of what the savings is when we do this, because I'm.
It changes.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I, to be honest with you, I don't know what the last delivery was. Um, I believe our gas was probably two dollars and ninety-some cents a gallon for
Okay.
the last time we got into the delivery.
And then against rack rate, that's a, what?
It's, it's similar. I mean, rack and Opus is two different market values, but they're, they're pretty much similar. Um, I would, I mean, and, and again, the other thing that we don't pay, we don't pay the taxes, we don't pay highway tax. So I mean, yeah, we're, we're getting pretty good rates on everything.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, because I was like, I looked that up, and I'm like, they don't let you see the rates.
No, no, no. So it's, it's a part of the consortium package, and, and then I apologize, I should have given you a, a guesstimate of what, like, the last delivery was, so you could understand, but, um, it's, it's their requirement to actually provide the printout with the invoicing, so we guarantee and double check that they're giving us what we need for that.
Okay, awesome.
So the motion was made by, if I remember correctly, Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Granger.
That was me.
Oh, seconded by Supervisor Blondie.
Be John out.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Ayes have a five zero. Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Supervisors.
Item ten, manager's report.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, thank, thank you, uh, thank you very much. Have a few items, uh, for the, uh, board's consideration this evening. Uh, the first item is, uh, consider payment request number. Uh, the first item is, uh, consider payment request number six, uh, which is the final, uh, payment, uh, for, um. The Stackhouse Pumping Station Upgrade Project, uh, in the amount of forty-one thousand, forty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, again, this is a sanitary sewer project that was commenced, uh, prior to, uh, the sale of, uh, the sanitary system to Aqua. Um, and these, this was one of the, um. Uh, capital projects that was being completed, um, that again was commenced prior to, uh, to that transaction. Um, Ebert Engineering has, has reviewed the, uh, uh, payment request and is recommending, uh, approval of, uh, this final payment application for this project.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Bundy, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Uh, any comments or questions for the board?
Uh, real quick, Dave, this is, this one was mostly funded by a grant, if I remember correctly, right?
Um, I believe, um. Does, does anyone know that definitively?
I think, I think that was a four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar grant that we received. From the state. Yeah.
Sure, our, our state representatives for assistance on this one.
Yeah. Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving, uh, payment request number six, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye.
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 I just have a five zero. Item B?
Okay, so item B is, uh, Resolution, uh, twenty-three dash nineteen, uh, authorizing, uh, and affirming, uh, our. Uh, participation in the Sustainable Pennsylvania Municipal Certification Program. Um, this is, uh, a joint, uh, initiative, um. Uh, of the Pennsylvania Municipal League, uh, as well as, uh, Sustainable Pittsburgh. Um, that evaluates municipal operations, uh, or, or municipal entities, uh, on, um. Uh, in, in sort of environmental issues, uh, economic issues, uh, financial issues, uh, really a, sort of a comprehensive evaluation. Um, this was something that's been expressed. Um, as, uh, sort of an objective, uh, on sort of the environmental front, uh, by the E A C in the past. Um, there are currently five, uh, municipal jurisdictions that, that are currently. Uh, certified under the program, uh, in Bucks County, uh, those being Middletown, Solbury, Doylestown Township, New Britain Township, and North, uh, Hampton Township. Um, we've, um, submitted, uh, the application. Uh, the application is under, uh, consideration. There were some, uh, items that we had to resubmit. Um, but one of the items that is required is, is, um. Uh, is the board to pass a resolution, uh, affirming your, your, um, your commitment to, um. Uh, to the program and the, and the sort of best management practices that the program embraces.
Mister. Absolutely second, if you can hear me over there.
I got you. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Grunier to approve Resolution twenty-three. Nineteen affirming Lower Makefield Township's participation in the Sustainable Pennsylvania Municipal Certification Program. Any comments or questions by the board?
Real quick, if I may, um, I'm very, it, very excited about this one, but I think. This, even back when I was on the E A C, we, we were recommending to the, the then board to pursue, uh, sustainable P A certification. Our, uh, personal opinion is, is taking too long, but I'm glad we're here. Uh, the E A C will be happy and it's just. The, the term sustainable or sustainability gets thrown around a lot. This is not just environmental issues, it's across the board sustainability from financial and policy, public works, you name it. It's how to make the township more sustainable across the board. I'm, I'm a, uh, certified in, uh, sustainable sustainability professional, uh, which is separate from this, but it's stuff that, um. We look into in, in the, in the private sector quite regularly and it's, it's. It's great that the township is getting involved because it will hold us accountable to, uh, track a lot of stuff and it can make us both. More sustainable, but also, also more, more efficient and potentially open us. Give us a higher ranking for things like getting state grants for, for being in this program. So all in all, I think this is a great idea, so I'm glad we're doing it.
And it'll also provide us with some metrics, um, you know, for areas of improvement as well. Uh, again, there, there's, uh, uh, as, as Supervisor Grunier has noted, it's. It is a comprehensive evaluation of municipal operations, uh, focusing on, um, a host of different, um, areas, functional areas. Um, sort of public policy areas. And so, um. You know, while you go through the certification process, there's an opportunity for improvement even beyond what your sort of initial certification is and. Um, uh, again, if I may, the, the work of the A C, particularly in the, um, sort of environmental area. Was, was sort of paramount to our ability to, um, score, um, uh, points within that, within that area. Uh, and again, it'll, it'll provide a. Uh, a metrics and, and sort of, uh, um, something that we can use to evaluate, uh, potential improvements moving forward. So I, I, I also support the program.
Any other comments, questions by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye.
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 I just have a five zero.
Yeah, just to be clear, there's no cost associated with this. This is just reflective of what we're doing, so. The next, the next item, uh, again, is, uh, an item that, um. Uh, the E A C had previously discussed, uh, with the, uh, Board of Supervisors regarding. Uh, a new, uh, multi-year tree planting, uh, plan. Uh, the E A C undertook this effort, I think it was in two thousand sixteen, if I'm not mistaken, uh, as, uh, was noted, um. Many of the sites that were identified as, as part of, uh, that initial, uh, or that two thousand sixteen, uh, tree planting plan. Uh, had been executed by the E A C. Um, and so, uh, this would, um. Uh, release a request for proposals, uh, to, um. Uh, hire a consultant for purposes of developing a new plan, identifying opportunities on, on largely township-owned, um, properties. Uh, as well as I know, um, there was some discussion when the E A C was here, representatives from the E A C were here. Regarding using tree planting as sort of a community engagement strategy. Um, so I think that, that will be part of this as well, is looking for opportunities, not only where, um, we would, um. You know, engage a contractor to, to do that work or have our internal folks do that work, but also look for opportunities where. Um, it may make sense, uh, for either smaller calibers trees or, or other types of plantings. Um, that could be the basis for, again, just general sort of community engagement around that issue. So. Um, uh, I've shared, uh, the R F P with, uh, the E A C. Um, to, um, solicit any feedback they have regarding, uh, the request. Um, I've gotten some follow-up from, uh, from the A C. Not, uh, necessarily substantive, uh, follow-up as it relates to, um, the R F P or the contents of the R F P. Uh, but again, just sort of reaffirming their commitment to, uh, working cooperatively with township staff and the board. Uh, in, in executing, uh, these types of plans. So, um, again, that, that's, um. Ready to go if the board is so inclined to release that.
Here I move, oh, actually, this is my house to crack.
Fine, Mister Chair, I, I would like to make a motion to authorize the release of an R F P for consulting services to develop a new multi-year tree planting plan.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Grunier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to, um, authorize release of an R F P. For consulting services.
Go ahead. Public comment regarding this item.
Uh, okay, if I could first.
Yep, board, board always gets the first bite.
Yes. There was a lot of discussion about tree planting in the previous discussion. It's important to realize that trees are an important part of stormwater management. And part of the reason. Well. We didn't, well, we didn't build the bridge.
We didn't, we didn't build the bridge.
But, oh, oh, hold, but, pardon, e- e- excuse me, if, if you would like to engage, you, you need to stand up. But I'm not finished my comment. Okay, hold on. So, I, having plans as to where to put trees, to how to manage stormwater, where to put them, where they'll be most effective, where they'll be, where they'll thrive. Is an important part of the process. There are specialists to do that, uh, and our E A C works with them. Uh, mostly volunteers do a lot of the tree planting work that we have. So this isn't.
You're spending thirty thousand on paying a consultant to put trees back where they belong, where they were just cut down. So you're putting down impervious, not impervious pavement, all over this place. I know you're just, I'm exhausted, just like you. I have been cleaning my garage. You, really, you're not doing anything for flooding.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Put the trees back in. I'm good with it. They were beautiful. You cut them down. I saw no reason for it. The, the roadway was the same roadway.
You're talking to the wrong person on this, and I'll tell you why. Because every developer who's asked to get waivers from the tree, uh, back, fee rules, I've hammered relentlessly and people didn't pay it. I tracked them down, right? So I'm serious about this stuff because I do care about it.
So we have airports going over our heads. We've got ninety-five, we have the worst air.
I don't control the bridge, right? That's a.
You should talk to the bridge. That's part of your job. We live right next to it. They built a building, they cut down a whole forest for, for the stupid bridge building. I don't think anybody works there. Have you seen the empty parking lot?
They have.
Again, more impervious pavement.
I. You don't have the authority to tell the Delaware joint.
You don't, but you can talk to them. The, when I worked in public, when, you talk to everybody.
Do talk to everybody.
You make a relationship. I work a forty-hour day week too, and I have been cleaning up my garage for years. Come on, guys.
Some of us got attacked for meeting with our elected officials on Sunday for trying to advocate our case. We do do that. Right? All I'm saying here to you is that it's important for us.
How much are you gonna pay? I've, I've watched you pass about three million dollars worth of stuff today. How much are you paying for a tree consultant? Call us, call the community. We'll dig the fucking holes.
Well, again, it's not the, it's not the planting of the, of the trees. It's, it's, it's.
You know where they need to go. They were already there. I know you're new. I remember when you got the job the other night. I mean, we know where the trees need to go. All right, I give up. I'm just staying, watching to see you do your, your great job. I'm impressed.
So. Okay.
Mister Lewis, I think you were making comments.
Yeah, I get interrupted a lot, so I'll just let it be. I'll let it sit there. I generally support, uh, a strategy for tree planting so that we can get more trees. In to collect stormwater, to make sure that we have less stormwater issues.
And just to be clear on this action, this is, this is essentially soliciting proposals. There's no, there's no cost associated with this action. Well, again, they'll, they'll provide a scope of services which will, which will outline the cost associated with doing the planning work. This is just simply soliciting proposals. From consulting firms as to what the cost would be to develop such a plan. The, the board is not acting upon a- anything other than, than requesting proposals at this point.
So, um, I don't know if this is appropriate for this time or, you know, for another time, but we did talk. We made some references to taking a holistic look at. Things in the township. And I think part of what, uh, our resident is trying to articulate is, you know. To the extent that trees are part of stormwater management. Should that, this R F P, which doesn't cost anything to do. Be part of that conversation, getting in someone who can look at the township and say, this creek. These trees that are gone or these trees that are dying or whatever, and be a much more holistic view than just focused on. Trees. I mean, you guys know, I, I torture you every year with, with planting trees. I'm, you know, so I'm all for planting trees, but I wonder if.
Yeah, absolutely.
Opportunity to pause.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and I think that, um, you know, we can, we can absolutely incorporate that as, as sort of a goal within, within this, within this. Um, again, we had a conversation about basin naturalization. Again, all, all those types of things, I think. Can be wrapped up into this in a more comprehensive fashion than perhaps they have been in the past, so.
The one thing I would, and you could probably wax poetic better than I can on this, but the one thing to. I appreciate that. I actually agree with that, but the, the nuance there is when you look at basin naturalization or. Um, converting. Uh, one of those old school basins that's mowed and deep and all that stuff that we're used to seeing, when we're trying to convert those to a more. Naturalized look or what folks might call the bioinfiltration basin, a rain garden, any, any of those terms you hear thrown around. That, the actual trees, you can put trees in there, that's great. The, the.
I, I wasn't using it. I was just, I was using it as an example that, that, uh, again, there's been a lot of, um. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the, the, you know, the, I, I think what, the only reason I raised that issue is that, you know. Basin naturalization, for example, when that's been discussed by certain groups, it's been. Not recognizing what goes into naturalizing a basin, I, and I, which I think you're, you're.
That's where I'm going, yeah.
That, that there is a, an engineering component to naturalizing a basin. It's not simply putting a meadow mix in a basin and saying you've naturalized a basin. So I, I was just using that as an example that, you know, we can look at tree planting in a similar sort of comprehensive way. Than just, you know, the aesthetic of a tree or, or whatever it may be.
Yeah, and, and there are many areas in the township, some that we know, because they're obvious. I, I think they are obvious, to your point. There's other areas that it, it takes someone some time to look at. Mapping and just going around and looking for areas where it makes sense. To put additional trees that aren't as obvious to get more bang for your buck.
Sure.
And there's, right now, we have a fair amount of money in, in, because of, we are chasing down developers to pay into that tree bank. Uh, to your point, Supervisor Lewis. We do have more money in that bank than usual, and we want to make sure that we get the biggest bang for our buck to put. As many trees as we can in the right areas to not only may have pretty trees and have li- nice landscape, something to look at, that's nice. But to use trees for what they do in nature, which is habitat and stormwater management and shade and everything else. So, that is, that's, that's why we want, and, and that's why we wanted some professionals that do this for a living to look at it. Our E A C does a ton, a ton of work to, in this front. Um, some of them are professionals in this field. I'm, I'm a professional in this field myself. That's my, part of my day job. But we do need, for this level of tree plan, we do need a plan. And it's, it can, it will be infinitely more efficient to use a pro- a professional that gives us a good proposal to do it. And then in terms of, and that's just to come up with a plan, the actual planting of the trees, which will be much more expensive. If, depending on the types and number of trees. That could be, we've done a lot of, and I know you've taken part in a lot of this, we've done a lot of volunteer plantings. Which saves us a ton of money. Some of the trees that we get are too big to do that. The volunteers aren't able, or company need equipment to do that. So, so many instances, we may need professionals to do that. So this plan will help us figure out. Where do, one, where do we put them, but also what types and sizes and where can we use. Volunteers to save money and then where do we need professionals to do it for us? Um, so I'm in favor of it. The E A C, who loves to do this stuff themselves, they're the ones actually pushing for it this time. Um, I'm the liaison to the E A C. I used to be on the E A C. So, I, I support this as well because I want to get this done quick, as quickly and efficiently as we can, so that we can then push forward, implement it in timely manner.
Uh, you're on mute, Fred.
Uh, any other board comment or questions?
Yeah, Dave, I just had a quick question for you. I think I've talked to you about this before. Um, as part of this, can we also, uh, have. Whatever company ends up doing this, um, take a look at Patterson Farms, a place for us to possibly buy and plant saplings. Um, in order for us to harvest at a later date.
Sure, we, yeah, I mean, we could, we could absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is you get them cheaper.
Use as a nursery, you're talking?
A nursery and then you move them as needed.
Yeah, I, I, that's, that's interesting concept. We'd want to see. That when you move bigger trees, they get stressed more. So we just want to see.
It's just like the right size, right? I mean, if you can start them off. For two bucks.
Worth looking at. It's worth looking, yeah, you can, you can get, you can get, uh. Yeah, you, you.
Definitely be part of the.
Yeah, just to consider it. Thanks.
Cool. Any, um, any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, five zero approved. Thank you. Okay, eleven, solicitor's report, Mister Trulow.
Mister Chair, uh, uh, you had asked, uh, to add something to agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna.
Okay, go, yeah.
Uh, just, uh, Mister Chair, one, one additional item that, uh, just wanted to bring to the board for, um, its consideration. If, if, uh, so inclined, you would have to make a motion to amend the agenda. Um, but re- recognizing, um. Uh, the damage, uh, that, uh, folks have sustained as a result of the, um, uh, the storm event. Um, wanted to talk to the board a, a little bit about, um. Uh, potentially waiving permit fees associated with residential permits, um, where folks. potentially waiving permit fees associated with residential permits, where folks are doing restoration work. Again, to ensure that that, you know, these these improvements are where where required are being appropriately inspected and documented. But but waiving the the fees associated with that process so that we can, you know, again, sort of balance the you know, the public safety aspect of why we permit things and and obviously not not having additional costs being incurred by the residents as they're trying to respond to the storm event. So I wanted to talk to the board about that, and if so inclined, I I think you would have to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I wish to add to the agenda an item ten?
Ten D.
Ten D. That would be entitled authorize the waiver of permit fees for repairs relating to storm damage associated with the storm of last Sunday, Saturday.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to waive permits for any damage.
Actually, we're just adding it to the agenda right now first.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're.
No, that's okay. And I just want to note that Mr. Kratz and I had an offline comment or discussion about this. I do believe you can do this under the Sunshine Act, even though under the new rules that were effective about two years ago. This does not directly involve an expenditure funds. And it is in it involves does involve an emergency situation. So I would say that my opinion would be, yes, you can do this.
Then, so we have a motion and a second to add this on the agenda. I'm going to waive comment, public comment. No public comment. We'll call the question. All those in favor of adding this to the agenda signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Aye, five zero. Okay, so we'll get a motion to approve the waiver.
Mr. Chair, oh, I think Supervisor Blondie beat me, so.
Well, have a second.
Okay.
So a motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to waive permanent fees. Or for any debt to correct any damage from the recent storm. Comment by the board? Other than we all want it.
Uh, Renner.
Yeah.
Public comment. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have a five zero. Thank you, Mr. Kratz.
Chair Weiss, you remind me that we forgot to mention during community announcements, and for anyone who's still listening, that the yard waste yard, that's what I like to call it, is open this week for anybody who has yard waste that they need to dispose of. It's open all week. And bring it by.
Thank you. Now, item eleven solicitor's report, Mr. True.
Yes, now it is.
Mr. True Love. Yes, my report. Thank you. There was an executive session tonight at six thirty. It commenced at six thirty, ended right before this meeting started. Items related to litigation, informational items and emergency items were discussed at the executive session. All board members who are present at this meeting are present along with the chief, myself, Mr. Kessler, Mr. Pokel, Mr. Fuller, and Mr. Majewski. And the meeting, as I said, the executive session concluded just before this meeting started after, well, with an interview of respective zoning hearing board alternate member. There are three items under zoning hearing board. I'll try to go through these quickly. The first appeal number is Z dash twenty-three twenty fifteen. Calvin Sun Appeals for the property located at fifteen fourteen Hayfield Drive, tax parcel two zero dash zero two, zero two eight dash one one one, requesting a variance from township zoning ordinance two hundred dash sixty-nine A fourteen small C in order to install fence and a sewer easement. This is a common application, and again, it's one that the zoning here board is familiar with and and will, I'm sure impose conditions to it'll be appropriate under the circumstances. We recommend deferral unless there's an op, a contrary thing. Hearing none, item B, appeal Z twenty-three dash two one zero seven, Edmund Reed for the property located thirteen fifty-nine Gates Circle, tax parcels two zero dash zero five eight dash one six nine, requesting a variance from township zoning ordinance two hundred dash nineteen capital B to allow an increase in impervious surface from the existing twenty-five point seven percent to twenty-six point five percent. Eighteen percent is the allowable amount in order to construct a ten by twelve foot storage shed. I would note that in the application, as is required, stormwater mitigation measures are also part of the requirement. Because the zoning hearing board is familiar with dealing with these issues, we again recommend deferral unless there's a contrary sentiment. I would note that none of these appeals involve a property that's in a flood zone or flood plain. Hearing no contrary sentiment on that one. The final item is appealed to Z dash twenty-three dash twenty eighteen, Murphy slash Potagar, Potagar, he's have a better way to read this, for the property located fifteen thirteen Bray Lane, tax parcel two zero dash zero zero three dash zero four three dash zero zero seven, requesting a variance from township zoning ordinance two hundred dash nineteen capital A in order to construct an in-ground concrete pool, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing eighteen point nine six percent to twenty twenty point nine seven percent, where nineteen percent is the allowable amount. Again, stormwater mitigation measures are included in the application. This is not in a flood zone or flood plain. We recommend deferral unless there's a contrary sentiment by the board. Hearing none, that's all my report, and I believe the first item under thirteen A is moved to the next meeting, so.
Yes, as part of the solicitor questions.
Sure.
One of the individuals you brought up is filing an appeal. It reminds me for a question I had for you. I believe there's been some news out of Newtown that Newtown Township that, and I think you know what I'm talking about here, but where I believe a township supervisor has made public comment, public opinion, I might say, I'll say, about some potential developments that would go in front of them, and the attorney in question has tried to keep them from voting on something because they've expressed some type of public opinion. Do we have to be careful as a board about what we say in public about?
The answer, the quick answer is yes, but I I don't know that any board member here, in my experience, in my meeting, including this board here, these you five members, we have strong opinions about concepts and about some development in general, but I have not heard anything that would indicate to me targeted comments about either a planned or 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 submitted development plan or something like that. If that would would occur, I certainly would would caution against a specific comments pending the full receipt of the evidence. However, I would note that that same law firm tried to do the same thing with one of our former zoning hearing board members about ten, eleven years ago in an application that was unsuccessful.
I guess one of the things I'm curious about is, say, someone's a liaison to the planning commissioner, zoning hearing board, more planning commission typically, and they express an opinion about a particular plan before it gets to the board. Can, would, is that aligned with what they're trying to?
Um, I think, you know, it depends on the comments. I mean, if the comments are this could plan could be improved, or or you know, those are things that would come up in in this forum as well. So if it's it's flat out saying, no, I don't like it, and regardless of the the zoning or the the land development status, I would never vote for it because I just don't like it. I've never heard that here. And I, you know, I I know the comments in Newtown, from my experience reviewing them periodically, have been more direct, targeted, and focused, I would say, than and and that's just my opinion. It doesn't mean that the the challenge is going to be successful. I'm not suggesting that, but I have not seen that in my experience here. So I'll just say that. I don't know if that helps or not, but but thank you for the question. Under community development, under B, we would, there's a request for extension of time for the Torbert Farm subdivision land development plan to, I think, it's on October first. October first of this year.
So moved second.
And that's their grant of extension to us, just so that's clear. If there's any comment, if not, all those in favor.
Well, the the only, the only question I had is how does that align with our upcoming meetings? Do we have to, do we have to do in our, actually do it a second meeting in September, something like that?
Okay, well, we would have to do this. It would, we would have to deal with it the second meeting in September as that extension exists right now.
Right now, early, yeah.
We do have one public comment, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
In the audience, if you want to step up.
This Miss Tipton is here to comment about that.
Yeah, I'm just really concerned after the weather on Saturday, and I know that behind me, the cast office is going, they're going to be building the six houses behind me, and I was already worried about water and my property being higher than Tom and Leah. Now, after what I saw happen at the Torbert Farm and all of that water coming from two ninety-five to Kramer Road, and that access underneath the roadway was not enough, I'm kind of freaked out. So I'm not exactly sure what they plan to do to fix that water, water runoff. I did look at the plans, and there was like two buffers, and I think my house was going to be like in the middle of it, so I'm not sure what those buffers and how the water.
Talking about the Torbert plant specifically?
Yeah, I don't know. And then they were talking about the road was going to change possibly.
Yeah, there's a realignment proposed that there's a lot of things that are being discussed now, and while we can't assure you that there's going to be new plans submitted, but the township professionals have been very much involved in discussions with the developer and and the council, do whatever they can to mitigate any of these concerns, and that's one of the reasons why the extension has been granted, because they, otherwise, that would have been heard at the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, so that's why there's another two month extension for that dialogue to continue and to take into account. And of course, you would have the right to appear at any hearing where that this would be discussed. But part of what the anticipated discussion would be is to address a lot of these issues you're talking about and other issues too. So I don't want to foreclose. I just want to make sure.
Alright, thank you.
We didn't vote on that, Eric. Okay. Now, unless there's any other comment, I don't want to steal your thunder, Mr. Chair. So.
I'm out of cough drops. Call the question.
I call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Ayes have a five zero.
Thank you.
Very good. But item fourteen supervisors reports, I have nothing to report. Ms. Blondie?
I would just urge everyone to continue to follow the progress of the Ad-Hoc Property Committee. I mean, there's a name, I thought suggested property, right? Buildings, we're trying to figure out what to do at this piece right now with the buildings on the farm. So please follow along. Please give your comments. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Uh, yes, the historical commission met last week and continues to work on Slate Hill Cemetery. Specifically, we've been cleaning the tombstones, many that date back as far as sixteen ninety-five. There's also going to be some tree maintenance there to protect people in the actual cemetery so the trees don't fall on them. So you may be seeing requests for volunteers to work on that going forward, and that's all I have as a report this time.
Thank you, Mr. McCartney.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the zoning hearing board met last night. They heard two applications from the same applicant, ADR Investments, which is American Dream Realty located in Levittown. The applicant had two applications for building lots, one on Reading Avenue, directly across from the Yardley Country Club along the the train tracks there. That application was approved. The second was a parcel on Heacock Road, and that application was declined. So they had one approved and one declined, and I have nothing else. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCartney. Mr. Renner?
Quickly, we already talked about EAC issues, so that was good. Chief, you may, you or Mr. Roach may be getting a few notes from this is the traffic commission shortly and some items that were discussed this week at our meeting.
I'll take a look.
Go to item fifteen. Any other business?
Oh. You can go. Okay. Uh, just real quick, it's a process question, and and it goes back almost to what we just did with the emergency of the waiving of fees. Um, are are we currently in a state of emergency in Lower Makefield Township? Can we, or?
Uh, yes, we are. We filed a declaration of emergency on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Day of the event. It was signed by the chairman.
Okay.
And we're now waiting for FEMA to actually, and Pima actually, to respond as far as applications for reimbursement and for damage.
As part of that process, are we able, is the, is the board able to empower the manager, uh, public works and and the engineer to do all means necessary during that time to make sure that any future events, as far as some of the residents talking about, maybe some emergency clean out at the creek or?
As long as the declaration is in existence.
Okay.
Um, you can waive all the bidding process, second class township code busy bidding process and all the other red tape that goes around that, if you're to make it an emergency repair.
Does that include cleaning out of the creek?
Um, I would imagine it does to prevent, it does not.
All is, one thing with the creek is that in order to clean it out the way we need to clean it out, Pennsylvania DEP has to approve it. There's a permitting, they have emergency permits. We've talked to them about the hole in the backyard about emergency permits. Creek cleaning, we'll have to talk to them about, see if we could get an emergency permit for that, but that does require very specific and that I've gotten before. So we will have to go through that process, but it it doesn't have to take that long.
Can it be done prior to Friday?
I doubt it.
But well, and my only concern is, I I know that it hasn't, it shouldn't take that long, but it's been.
Yeah, I'm I'm right there with you.
So what's the, what's the repercussion if we decide not to go that route?
What if, like, you know, a group of volunteers just went there and cleaned some of it?
Well, there's, there's different. So if you affect, if you're trimming trees, getting logs out of there, that you're not affecting the stream itself, debris. It's like a trash pickup, right? In my opinion, Jimmy, if you disagree, tell me.
Especially debris that fell in the creek.
During an event.
Storm.
However, the the biggest, and that that's like dealing with a beaver dam almost for, just to make it simple, right? Where where that line gets drawn, and and there are some issues on Taylorsville that we need to do this too, where we have a lot of sediment, like actual sediment, dirt, stuff like that where we're dredging.
Sure.
Dredge is the key word there, that we can't do that without a permit. Cleaning branches and logs that are in there, we can absolutely do that.
Okay.
So if you have a private contractor to do that, you could supersede all the bidding process and RFPs and things like that.
Okay, so I I don't know what the.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, in terms of the, I I think the declaration, and chief, you you probably can speak to this as the emergency management coordinator, but generally, the declaration includes language that that, you know, authorizes, you know, essentially the appropriate township staff to take any and all actions necessary to respond to to the to the incident. So and we can.
Language, but I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
But it's something, it's something similar to that.
And I mean, by signing it, I'm sure the chair, you know, authorized on behalf of the board, but I just want to reiterate that the board.
Yep.
Whatever you need to do between now and then to make sure that Friday is as less of an event as possible down at that corner. I think that we all agree. Get it done.
They just saved me a discussion with you, Derek. There, there you go. They, there's your direction, right?
Get her done, Derek. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just as a matter, just as a matter of record, the the last paragraph of the declaration, you know, we direct the Lower Makefield Township Emergency Management Coordinator to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of the disaster and aid in the restoration of the essential public services, and take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this disaster. So it's pretty open ended, and between the chief and the township manager and our staff, we should be able to get at least as much done as possible between now and the end of the week.
Thank you, Chair Weiss. Appreciate that.
You see, yeah, you you just saved the EMC a call too.
There you go.
Chief has a chainsaw. I don't think he has a dredger, so I think we'll we'll be okay.
Seeing you out there.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. So any other other business?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the solicitor and I had been speaking just kind of back and forth. Given the circumstances of what happened, there is a potential for us to consider a pause on development until we've remedied stormwater issues. It wouldn't be unheard of.
Well, you pointed out, I think, and and look, I don't want to make any promises that this is something we can accomplish, but it's something worth looking into. You mentioned, I think it was a good analogy that several years ago Newtown Township had a moratorium on development because of the of the sewer sewer EDU issue. So, you know, obviously, there are different situations in terms of what the cause is. But if if, you know, if if there's, it's a health and safety issue that, I mean, I'm again, unprecedented circumstances here. I mean, not to mention, I mean, we had prior floods, but in terms of some of the ways it affected people here, I I would, you know, we're happy to look at anything that you're talking about, whether it's court action, agency contacts, whatever it might be to to try to.
Does that go hand in hand with 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 chief's ability during this time of of a state of emergency to be able to say, because of health and safety issues, we're we're we're. Because of health and safety issues, we're, we're, we're.
Well, look at that. I, I would be less, uh, not because it's the chief, it's just because I don't think.
Just the chainsaw. You don't get anything else, right?
I think it, it goes to the jurisdictions, uh, township wide of, over what oversight we would have and what enforcement rights we would have. And, you know, either under the MPC or something else, but there are certain things that we might have to say, look, we have to, we have to. Re-look at some of the standards that we have in the township. Now, if, you know, obviously we'd have to have some. Engineering expertise or somebody who could also provide some back, backup to say that, yeah, that some of these issues and some of these. Areas of development could very well contribute to some of the issues we've had. And if we have another storm or other things occur in the near future. You know, all the efforts to make to remediate may, maybe for naught. We, we just can't, it, it, it's a, it's a, we're on a hamster wheel now, so to speak for this. We can't be doing that. So. I don't know. I don't want to make your motion for it, but that's how, that's what our discussion was about.
If, if would, uh, the chair would entertain the motion, it would be I, I move that we direct the solicitor to review options for. Uh, a pause on new development until stormwater.
Yeah. We have to add it to the agenda first.
Oh. Sorry.
Yes.
And I think again, because the emergency nature.
Well, no, I'm only directing you for the next meeting, so it wouldn't be taking action.
Okay, alright.
Right? So it's just me asking you to review if we can take that action.
Alright.
We may not have the legal capability to do so.
Right.
Um, so that's what I'm shooting for.
You want, obviously want that information.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need a motion. We just need consent from the board.
Alright, okay.
We can do that.
You got it.
Gotcha, alright.
For staff and the solicitor. Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, you got it.
We will look into that.
Okay.
Yep.
And Chair Weiss, I make a motion to appoint Christian Schwartz to the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Have other business.
Oh, wait, there's other business and.
There's still other business.
Sorry.
Take it back.
No, you can vote on that if you want. No, really. It, in the same vein as, as what tools we have are at our disposal to address the stormwater issues, the big, bigger picture items especially. I'm not making a motion. I'm just, I'm asking our solicitor and our township manager. In terms of when we look at funding sources, right? I think I said earlier. You know, we, we've had all these parking wreck projects approved. Like one and a quarter million dollars. They're not ready to be built yet, I, I think. I'm breaking in my car. Um, is that you, John?
My mom, I gotta go.
I'm gonna go. Does anybody else need keys to?
Not me.
My car's over there.
Who's is it? Mine.
You okay?
Anyhow.
Trying to get us out of here, aren't you?
There you go.
So just, just a point that when we talk about these issues, an emergency declaration is only good for about twenty-one days, I believe it is, right, Dave? Yeah, unless it's re-upped or renewed somehow through some of that, yes.
But, but. Getting back to what I was saying, you know, we, we have. A million and a quarter or so parking wreck projects that. Aren't ready to be built yet. We've got, we just voted, it, maybe some of that money may be available. We could redirect. I know. The way the budget is, see what we would have to do to do that. Uh, we have the other monies that we've talked about previously. I don't know, I forget the, the seven million or whatever it is that we have. Within bond money and other, other monies to see what we could do with that. We also just had our vote. On, on the trusts where if, if, if there's any possibility of pulling back some of that to have it. Have it in a, in a safe, safety fund that we might be able to fund some of these stormwater projects, infrastructure projects.
Yeah, and on, on that one, just, uh, the, the. I, I did just check with Allison. She has not made that transfer yet, so that money has not been deposited in the trust. So there, uh, again, uh, the direction of the board obviously was to make that deposit. Uh, she was waiting until, um, the interest had credited for the month of June following the action that was taken on the twenty-first. Uh, then there was the holiday, then she was, um, then, then we were dealing with storm events. So that, so that money has not been transferred technically at this point. It's been all, obviously authorized to be transferred.
I, I, I would be.
What's that? What that it was, yeah, I, I, again, I, I'm not, the timing of it is, I, I don't, she was, again. I, I'd been direct, I, I, as soon as the board authorized the action, I directed her to make that transfer.
Right. So, and, and. I'm, I'm thinking out loud is what I'm doing, just to look at different pots of money that we do have as a board to see where it might make, where we have opportunities. To use some of, put some of that aside to know like when we are able, want to fund. The planning process, right? For what I'll call the planning process preliminary conceptual engineering, if you want to call it that, for the watershed. And then. You, once we do, you know, these projects are not going to be cheap by any means. Within the watershed, whether it's. Additional basins, expansion of basins or check dams, whatever they are, they're not going to be cheap.
You're talking about that other three hundred acres that you referred to earlier.
Exactly, yes.
What was, do you know what the phase two cost was for Mapleville?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
That's what was in the.
That was, it was in the presentation. I don't know if that's.
That was what was in the presentation.
Can we authorize that?
That's the match.
Yeah, can we, can we, I mean, can we authorize that, the movement on that immediately? Or do we have, I, I know that you said we.
That would have to be an agenda item at another meeting.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, yeah, I agree with you, Fred. It's not a bad idea, but we'd have to talk about it separately later. But again, it's one of, what are the tools? So, um. I'd encourage the board to just consider some of these. Options or maybe Dave, Dave, if you're Mr. Kratz or if you haven't. Could show us some tools that we, you know, arrows in our quiver, so to speak, to, to be able to address these issues and how we might be able to do it. That's what I'm curious about.
There are, there are. I'm not an expert on how. Watershed projects would be funded. However, I would urge the board not to reconsider. The money in the trust to be used for anything other than, uh, revenue streams at this point. We have. Close to ten million dollars of monies that are available for studies. Parking wreck issues. You know, this, this watershed issue that has been identified that might address. What happened last week. You know, we might have to bring in state, the feds. There might be bond issues that we have to talk about, but this is a major change. In, in our thinking and is going to require a lot of thinking, uh, over the course of months. So. You know. No matter how we decide to, you know, I totally agree with Supervisor Granger. And, and we have to address this. It's a priority. I didn't realize how much of a priority it is, but last week, you know, showed us that. We have issues that need to be addressed, you know, everything from a, a new MS four plant. Uh, or amending it to, you know. Specifics and how we're going to mitigate water from. One area that has to, to the river. You know, it's, 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 you know, you're right. It's very complicated. I think it's, it would overtax the township and we have to bring in our partners. Uh, to, uh, to make this truly comprehensive and holistic. But, but, you know, taking the money from the trust would be a bad idea. That's all I'm going to say about it for now. Other businesses. We got. Uh, appointments to, reapportments to boards, commissions, Ms. Blondie.
Make a motion to appoint Christian Schwartz to zoning hearing board.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Granger to appoint Christian Schwartz as a member of the. As an alternate for the zoning hearing board. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it five zero. And being there's no other public, uh. It's no, and there is, we've done public comment. But is there any public comment on the line or in, in the room?
There's no public comment online.
Okay. So being there's no more, uh, additional business and no more public comment. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in two weeks.